Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 5th Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. The Board will be entering into executive session, and we will hope to come back into regular session just about 7:00. Thank you.
Do you have to make a motion to?
Oh, make a motion to enter.
Make a motion to enter into executive session.
But we have to have a reason, correct?
You can read the.
To conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21.3.
It's not just non-union, though. Because these positions are in union.
Right.
I think it should just be for collective bargaining.
Yep. So just leave out the non-union.
Yeah.
We'll leave out the non-union.
To conduct strategy sessions with collective.
You can say non-union and union.
Union and non-union personnel for collective bargaining purposes.
Second.
Any other discussion? Take a roll call.
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Thank you. We'll see you back in about an hour. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 5th Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We are just entering into session. We just came out of executive session. So is there anybody here?
Pledge.
Oh, and you know I love the pledge. How could I forget the pledge?
You can do it.
I know. Tom, will you lead us today?
Sure.
All right.
I pledge to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, equal and equal.
No, we have a full agenda. I know. Look at me tonight. Okay. Anybody here for citizens input? Mr. Delaney?
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. I'd be remiss before my comments for citizens input not to say something about a recent resident of ours, a former Board of Sock member, Mark Sullivan, has passed. I'd just like to publicly wish Mary Ann and the kids on telling our thoughts and prayers from our community with him. I had the privilege to serve with Mark and became friends with him, and he'll be greatly missed in this community.
Thank you, Bert.
So tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf. I'm asking the Board to listen to the points I have regarding the MBTA communities ask. That is in relation to Article 6 and 7 that you'll be discussing later on and that the residents will be voting on at town meeting, okay? I have four points to discuss. Back in the spring, the town meeting, we overwhelmingly voted not to support the original MBTA Act, MBTA Dense Housing Act. You know that. We all know that. Who was there? We voted that down based on the information we had at the time. Now, here we are six months later, and we're being asked to vote again on a couple different modified proposals of the MBTA Dense Housing Act. At the time, now, as in back then, the state is saying if we're not in compliance with this act, then the town of Foxborough will be basically held hostage, and we will have funding, grant funding, held back against us. We are currently still, as you know, we are in compliance. We are not in compliance according to the state up until December 31st of this year, okay? As of right now, the town of Milton, and again, I'm sure you know, Milton has a case at the highest court level, the town of Milton, at the highest level in the state. The state is going to determine if Milton has the right to object what the state is mandated on to do. What I suggest to this Board and what I suggest to the community, as we wait until that decision has been rendered, there is no reason to make a decision now until we hear what the state of Massachusetts is going to say about that. Point number two. The survey that was put on by the town that was on the town webpage. To say it bluntly, the survey results that you have, that we all have, should be thrown out the window. The survey, as you know, anyone could answer to that survey. Anyone that had a computer and the internet. It was not secluded to Foxborough residents. So if you have a computer and you have the internet, you could answer to that survey. Doesn't matter how many times you answer that survey. Any one of us could answer it multiple times. That survey is invalid, and it's biased. And it's biased because there are only two options on that survey. Option 1 and option 2. There should have been an option 3 that gave residents the opportunity to vote they don't want anything regarding this dense housing community. So that's a biased survey, and as anyone that's dealt with surveys, you can pick and choose and do what you want with those results. But I'm telling you now, when you consider this later on tonight in the discussion at town meeting, those survey results should be thrown out the window. There is no reason why we should have any input from anyone that doesn't live in this community, okay? Point three. Actually, point number two, continue. I apologize for that. As confirmed to a resident, Charlotte Jones, in an email that she forwarded to my wife from Catherine Ferick, who's the Director of Land Use and Economic Development in the town of Foxborough, who I understand did a wonderful job in her presentations. This is an email that Ms. Jones has allowed me to read to you. Hi, Charlotte. Mara and I will modify the survey to try to restrict it to residents, though there is no absolute way to do so. I'm going to read that one more time. Hi, Charlotte. Mara and I will modify the survey to try to restrict it to residents, though there is no absolute way to do so. If that doesn't invalidate those survey results, folks, I don't know what to tell you. Point number three. This just came to my attention today, which absolutely is blowing my mind. Maybe you've already heard about it. Outside influences are trying to influence the town of Foxborough with this dense housing articles, okay? People outside of this community have no right, no bearing to tell us what to do. We know the community better than anyone. However, the state of Massachusetts is not only going to, they're going to consequence us, lay consequences on us if we don't vote in the way they want. They have now partnered with a lobbyist group, and I want to say that's a lobbyist group called the Citizens Housing and Planning Association of Boston, CHAPA for short, C-H-A-P-A. Why is the state employing a lobbyist group to hold a Zoom meeting a week before a town meeting, and they have nothing to do with the town of Foxborough? Is it coincidental that the meeting is a week before town meeting? Because I'm not the brightest bulb in the circuit, but I can say, hmm, a week before, they're trying to draw up opinions to help the state. Why would anyone, anyone, take what they have to say for our town and go with it? It has nothing to do with us. Everyone in this community should be concerned about that, regardless of what you stand on, okay? The final point I'm going to make is simple. I said this on town meeting, and I'm going to say it again. Why are we bothered voting? Why are you going to vote, Doc, at town meeting? If the state has said your vote doesn't matter. And when I say doc, because I'm looking at them, that goes for every one of you, me, everyone sitting behind me. Everyone in this town should be appalled at what the state has said they are going to do. If we do not vote in the way they want, we are going to be consequence financially. Are we not protected under the Constitution of the United States? What's the sense of voting? I'm asking you as the leaders of this community, there are people that look to you to guide them at town meeting. You are elected for a reason. You're all very intelligent people. Just based on that, you should stand up at town meeting and say, I do not support this because it is unconstitutional, and we live in the United States of America. And the last thing I'm going to say is this. Let the state threaten us with withholding grant monies. Let them. Because as we have all seen, the state is incompetent when it comes to financial budgeting. This state, Bill, you've been dealing with municipal budgets a long time. You can see what the forecast is. We're not going to have to worry about grant money. There's not going to be any. I appreciate your time. I just ask that you take those things into consideration, because again, the residents of this community look to you for guidance. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for citizens input? No. Katie, anybody online or anything? Okay, perfect. Okay, we can move to Casey. We have a nuisance dog public hearing. Motion to open.
We have to public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Gayla Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, and Chapter 78 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, to address a complaint filed with the Board relative to an alleged nuisance and/or dangerous dog resulting from an incident that occurred on October 10th, 2024, in the Garrett Spillane and Edwards Road neighborhood involving Moose, a neutered mailboxer owner Laurie Montanaro of Seven Patriot Circle. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Nuisance dog. Is that still now?
No.
No, that was just to open.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Okay, now Casey.
So I'm just going to start with a report of the incident that occurred that day, and then I'll kind of go over some general information about the dog for the past five years. On Wednesday, October 9th, I received a report from an urgent care of a bite incident. The victim's name was Ms. Greenspan. I contacted her via phone, and she stated she was at a bus stop at Garrett Spillane and Edwards Road with her two younger children. She stated a woman came running up the road pushing a stroller, attempting to get away from a brown and white dog. The dog ran up to the group and attacked several people, including herself, her two children, and another child. Ms. Greenspan, at that time, was unsure who the dog was, but did state it lives on Patriot Circle and possibly lived in a blue house. She stated she would be receiving stitches for the bite she received, and the injuries to the children were not as severe, and they were at school being checked out by the school nurse at this time. She was able to provide me with the name and address of the other children involved in the incident as well. I went to the address of the other child involved at the time there was no one at the residence, but shortly after, I received a call from his grandfather. Mr. Hannan was calling on behalf of his daughter, Ms. McLaughlin, who at this time was at the doctor having her son treated for his bites that were sustained during the incident. Mr. Hannan was able to confirm who the dog was via the information provided by his granddaughter. Once I arrived back at my office, Ms. Greenspan had contacted me back. She stated she was taking her children to the doctor, since at this time it appeared that the dog had bitten her son and possibly scratched, or bitten her daughter and possibly scratched her son. She was able to confirm that Ms. McLaughlin had been able to contact the owner of the dog, and the rabies certificate was sent to her via text. At this time, I was able to reach the dog owner, Ms. Laura Montanaro. I explained what happened, and this time, there were three confirmed bites to three different people, two of which were small children. I informed her I would be issuing citations for each person bitten and a citation for the dog running at large. I also told her I would be requesting a dog hearing with the town, since the dog is so frequently out running loose and is now involved in biting multiple people. She stated she could not continue to deal with this and wanted to know her other options for what to do with the dog. I stated at this time, due to liability purposes, he would not be adoptable, and I recommended she either euthanize or find a more sustainable place for the dog. We discussed the quarantine and that the dog cannot be outside unattended or off-leash during the duration of the quarantine, and informed her the dog can't be rehomed, moved, or euthanized during this time. So this is not the first bite incident with this dog. There was one involving a mail carrier that happened back in... Let me pull that date up. This happened January 18th of 2023. This dog has been ongoing, constantly running loose. It started when they first got him as a puppy almost six years ago now. He just started out as a silly puppy who was running loose. It was a frequent conversation she and I had of formal training, getting the dog neutered at that time, coming up with options to keep him contained to the property. They do have a fenced-in yard that they choose not to put him in. They also have a runner that is attached to the front steps of the house that they choose not to latch him to. They did send him off for formal training, I believe it was a year and a half ago now, when he came back. Seems to be when kind of the behaviors got worse with, he no longer was just a silly dog. Now he was fighting. He was unable to be caught. Anytime I got called out for him, I wasn't able to catch him. The owner wasn't able to catch him. She would try to get him in the car, and he would take off running from her. There was an incident where a neighbor was able to contain him in the backyard. When I got there to retrieve him, the dog was trying to bite he and I while we were trying to get a leash on the dog. Another incident where I was called out, the dog was loose on the road on Patriot Circle. I got there in my truck. I was unable to get out of my truck because the dog was circling the truck, barking and growling at me. I contacted the owner to come out to get the dog. She sent her younger teenager out to retrieve the dog, who also was unable to catch him. We finally were able to get the owner to come out, and we were able to get a leash on him and get him back into the house at that point. I mean, ultimately, I don't think that there's any actual control of this dog. The behavior is significantly getting worse from the time that they got him as a puppy to the incident now where we have a woman who is being chased pushing a stroller and children at a bus stop. Somebody ended up with stitches. I mean, it was pretty significant.
Okay, and the owner basically is saying to you, what can I do?
She...
Do you feel like they've given up on the dog? I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean, there's only so much you can do.
Right. So I think at this point, she's decided she can no longer take care of the dog. She doesn't necessarily want to make a decision on what to do with the dog herself. And she said that she was trying to find somebody to take the dog, but that's become... I mean, we're talking a dog now that's bitten four people, so I mean, safety-wise, rehoming that is unrealistic, so.
Anybody else have a question? So you're recommending euthanasia, correct?
I am, yeah. Yeah, I don't think that any, I mean, anything that we put forth, I don't think she's going to be able to adhere to. I mean, realistically, she, like I said, they have a fenced yard that they choose not to put the dog in. They have a runner that they choose not to put the dog on. They just kind of just let him go in the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, it's too bad, because, you know, where they're not willing to do that stuff, you don't know if the problem could have, could have at some point been solved.
Right. And she's received multiple citations for the dog running at large previously, too, so it's not like this, like she was unaware that the dog was the problem, so.
How long was the quarantine? Sorry, I thought you said it.
It's a 10-day quarantine for the bite, yeah.
And how many, is it done with the quarantine?
For...
Quarantine's over.
Quarantine's over, absolutely.
So she doesn't want to make the decision?
Right. Yep.
I mean, that's...
Make this easier if she did, so.
No, I know. I mean, that's what makes it a little bit uncomfortable, is if she's not willing to make the decision, she puts it on us to make the decision. That's not feeling like a good place to be, so I don't know if the answer is there, and maybe you could push her to take some accountability here.
I have had multiple discussions with her at this point, too. I tried getting her to rehome the dog years ago before it even got this bad. Once she sent it to training, I think she just thought it would kind of fix everything, and it obviously did not. So I think now it's just, she doesn't necessarily want to take the accountability of what to do moving forward with the dog, so.
I would say unfortunately, she's not taking the accountability all the way around. She has the options with the fenced-in yard, with the leash. I mean, it's unfortunate that it's gotten to this point, but, and I feel for the dog more than I probably feel for the owners, but the reality is that they're not going to control it. We're going to have a continued problem, which could get much worse.
Unfortunately. You know, we had a puppy who growled and snapped. It wasn't like a puppy playing, and our breeder offered to take her back and replaced her, and everything was fine. But she was like eight to 10 weeks old, just like a baby. At that point, you were able to train and to maybe change some behaviors. It sounds to me at this point that we're way past that.
Yeah.
And, you know, but, you know, being a dog animal lover, this is heartbreaking, but I think unfortunately, where she's not going to take responsibility, that's what we're here to do. And I would, I would say that unless anybody else feels differently, we should probably take a motion to, we would be making a motion to have... Moose.
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 Yeah.
To be, is the process where then you would take control of the dog? Or do we, our decision would make her?
Yeah, so usually the way it works is that once, it's just as any other order, she is expected to comply within the amount of time. So she has the 10-day period to contest the order or to comply to the order, so.
So would our first motion be to deem Moose dangerous first?
Yeah.
Is that, okay. I'm sure the motions are right here. You want to, anybody else have anything that they want to add before we go for a motion?
No, I just remember we had a similar situation last year, and there are very specific guidelines, and very specific in terms of a dangerous dog. So does this dog meet the definition of a dangerous dog under those guidelines?
So I would say yes. I would say that this is a dog that has bitten unprovoked, so we're not talking like it was protecting something or anything like that. And so that I would agree that it would absolutely fall under a dangerous dog classification.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Are we supposed to ask if anybody else has?
Yeah.
Is anybody? Because I didn't think of that, the owners or who was affected. I'm so sorry.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Hawkins. I'm an attorney. I represent the Greenspans. I'm not suggesting anything that the Board should do, but they did ask me to speak on behalf of their family and how this incident has impacted them. Their son, Kobe, and their daughter Natalie were involved in the attack as well, and they were very traumatized from the incident. When the kids went to school, they were hurried from the bus stop to the bus and hurried to school, and they were brought for kind of a de-stressing meeting at the school when they were there. And then they were shortly thereafter brought to get checked out for rabies if they needed to have shots. And Natalie, when she went to bed later that evening, was visibly shaking, traumatized from the incident. So the incident really impacted the family, and they don't live too far from where the dog lives as well, and the kids are kind of afraid to go outside now. The mom had a pretty significant wound. I'm not sure if you've seen that in your pictures. So they just really wanted me to relay to the Board that this has been a really traumatic incident for them, their family, their small children. They're still kind of reeling with it and dealing with it. And again, I'm not suggesting one way of the Board what to do, but I did want to speak on behalf of the family, let you know how it has impacted them.
Thank you. I can imagine.
All right, now close.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll take a vote on a motion to deem Moose a dangerous dog?
Motion to determine Moose as a dangerous dog?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstaining? Raise your hand. All right, one abstain. Was there a one? Katie saw that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so...
Do we have to do a motion then to?
So the motion then would be for us to...
Order euthanasia of Moose.
Motion to order euthanasia of Moose, the dog.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, you're abstaining.
Abstaining. All right, Casey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please, please let the Greenspans know that we're thinking of them.
Thank you.
I'm sure it was, that's how people unfortunately become afraid of dogs.
Yes.
When they witness or are involved in an incident. We'll be thinking of them. Hopefully, as time goes on, they'll be able to get over here. Thank you. Okay, not an easy decision, but, okay. Are we, okay. Next, we have discussion on the opioid abatement fund review. So we have Matt. Excellent.
The whole group is here for this.
Exactly.
He's out talking to Bert. He'll be back.
Yep. Betsy, do you want to join as the chair? It's up to you.
I can sit for support. Because we voted, but...
Oh, well, perfect. I'm sure Matt has all the information for us anyhow, but I just know that, you know, you guys had a lot of discussion, the fact that you were the chair. I just want to welcome you up here if you'd like to.
So hello, Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health. I have here today Betsy Aloe, Chair of the Board of Health. Chief Grace is in the room, or was in the room. We have Assistant Fire Chief Tom Kenvan and Christina, and we also have Robin Chappell, the Board of Health's clerk. So tonight, we are presenting an overview of the opioid abatement funds and our strategy to distribute these funds. That strategy was actually recommended by the Board of Health, and it was voted unanimously to support it on October 21st. And they are here, and I'll invite them to speak at the end. Next slide, please. So... Oh, thank you.
Might have a tough angle.
Usually, yeah, there you go. So if you're watching from home or new to the opioid abatement funds, Massachusetts Attorney General's Office and many other attorney generals throughout the country sued the opioid manufacturers, distributors, and pharmacies in 2021. And because of that, the town started to receive settlement funds from the companies involved, and the grand total is almost $1 million. It's $975,671 that we'll receive through the year 2038, so quite a long time. There's one caveat, though, that these funds have to be used in accordance with the terms and the conditions pursuant to the state subdivision agreement or the court agreement that was made with these companies. So in the next slide, we can go over how much the town has received and who from. So as you can see here, the total payments that the town has received so far is $301,413.92. It comes from distributors like McKesson, Cardinal Health, Marisource, Jansen, which is Johnson &amp; Johnson, pharmaceutical companies such as Teva and Allergan, and pharmacies like CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. And actually, even more money could still be received through other legal actions like the Purdue Pharma case. Now that we've begun to receive these settlement funds, here's a quick rundown on what the acceptable uses of these funds are or what's in the state subdivision agreement. We could use these funds for opioid use treatment, supporting people in treatment and recovery, connections to care, harm reduction, addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, supporting pregnant or parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal abstinence syndrome, and preventing the misuse of opioids and implementing prevention education. So as we move forward in the presentation, we'll use these categories to describe our funding allocations. And last, and most importantly, the use of these funds must reflect the input of the community, especially those with a lived experience, and they must address gaps in our existing services and address mental health conditions while leveraging the programs that the state already offers. So in order to do this, we needed to get the survey of the community. The Health Department took the lead. We surveyed residents from the town website, from links on Facebook, Instagram, through the Council on Aging, and even took... through the Council on Aging, and even, um, took, uh, surveys at Founder's Day. Uh, we received approximately, um, ninety-six responses. Uh, you'll see in some of the data, though, the numbers don't always equal a hundred percent, but that's because, um, individuals, because some of these were paper, could check more than one box. But basically, this is what, you know, the, of the residents who took this, um, here's what people said. Uh, thirty-four percent said individuals, uh, reported that they had not been impacted by opioids. Uh, twenty-three percent either had a family member, a loved one, or a coworker in their life with an opioid addiction. Uh, sixteen percent of individuals reported losing a loved one, and eight percent of individuals had a family member or loved one, um, that was currently in it, uh, currently addicted to opioids, and three percent reported that they were actually in recovery from opioids themselves. So, uh, what did the residents want, uh, these funds to be used for? Well, overwhelmingly, forty-eight percent of the residents wanted, uh, the funds to treat residents, um, to, to support residents in treatment and recovery. Uh, they also wanted to prevent the misuse of opioids by implementing prevention education. Uh, twenty-two wanted to offer, uh, greater opportunities for opioid use treatment. Uh, nineteen percent wanted greater harm reduction services and more connections to care. Um, fifteen percent wanted to support pregnant women. Lastly, five addressed the needs of a criminal justice-involved person. Now, when asked if you want us to use the money for a single item or multiple things, eighty-six percent of people responded that they wanted us to offer multiple programs with the money. So not only did we have the resident feedback, we received feedback from elected board, town officials, and department heads, too. So, um, here are some of the other perspectives that we heard, um, as part of the process. So, you know, as we just went over, we had the community feedback that they wanted multiple programs, supporting residents, um, and more harm reduction and treatment, and we had the Board of Health's perspective where they wanted health-related programming, uh, they wanted to follow the community wishes, they wanted the prevention education in schools, um, in harm reduction, and to reduce stigma, uh, in the community. And then we have public safety's perspectives, and I can give that to Christina if you wanna.
Sure. Through public safety, I think we saw a gap in connecting people to services in real time, so that's something that we were really, um, passionate about, wanting to, to get off the ground. We were hoping to hire a part-time, uh, clinical person, so we're calling them the Substance Use Coordinator. Um, so we're hoping to host in-person clinical support groups to provide more wraparound care, um, support residents, um, and their families in the spectrum of recovery, cause we understand it is a spectrum. We, uh, care a lot about harm reduction, and we want an informed clinical approach. We're working with these folks.
So you can see, you know, trying to make one cohesive plan with all the different perspectives, um, was gonna be challenging, but, you know, we met, um, we collaborated with one another, and we came up with a unified plan. Um, here it is. So our initial recommendations, and please be mindful, these are our initial recommendations. We plan to meet on a regular basis. So if we find out something isn't working, we wanna be able to change that and do what's effective for Foxborough, um, and do what's right for the community. Um, so as discussed, um, previously, here's our, um, funding, um, priorities. So in connections to care, I can give it to Christina, and I'll do the rest.
Sure. So, um, we were thinking, you know, specifically, that it feels like there's a gap. My role in public safety does, you know, touch upon some people who are, you know, using substances, but we also felt like it was important to have somebody who had more expert knowledge in that subject. So we're hoping that if we were able to fund a part-time, uh, clinical staff person, whether they're a social worker or a different type of background that way, as long as they have some tie to substance use disorder, um, we could potentially, like I mentioned, run an in-person support group, provide brief counseling, connect people to care, and help coordinate services, um, throughout. So, um, through the, my work with the public safety, potentially outreach with, with, uh, the police and fire to, whether it be schools or businesses, um, and then working with individuals as well. Um, so ideally, hoping to connect people to information, education, and resources, but then also helping the individuals who are looking for those services as well.
Um, and then, uh, other than that, we wanted, um, you know, harm reduction. So, we wanted to increase the presence of Narcan in the community, uh, continued sharp disposals, uh, at the community health, the new community health center. Um, we wanted to give, uh, funds to, uh, prevent, uh, misuse of opioids by, uh, creating school programming and, uh, events at the school. Uh, we wanted to be able to treat, uh, opioid disorder, and we were thinking about a Foxborough peer-led addiction support group, something in town that residents can go to and don't have to go to, you know, another community in order to access these sort of supports. Um, and also, uh, support people, support residents with wraparound services such as fundamental, uh, services like food, housing, childcare, job placement, and then leave a little as a Board of Health grant. That way, um, you know, community members can come to the Board of Health, or we as individual departments can come to the board and ask for greater money, um, and, which could be given out and used for any of the, any of these reasons, as long as it meets the shared, um, subdivision agreement. So, you know, can we do all this? You know, we, we went over a lot. This is basically the financial data. So if you look at the financial information, most of the money will be spent, um, in, in the beginning. You can see here, the Substance Use Coordinator, uh, is in the dark blue. It's, you'll notice it's only the first, uh, five or six years, um, considering we're already in 2025. So, once that is, um, out, then the rest of the, um, other expenses besides the connection to care, the, uh, the Substance Use Coordinator would, uh, move through the following timeframe of the, uh, of the grant. Can, can we support all this? Can we support everything? Uh, we, actually, we can. So if you look at the running data, um, you know, it's, we're, the, the running totals are on the top, which the town will receive a million dollars. And then if you look at, um, each individual, uh, line there, if that's another year, um, the, the monies, um, that will be left over in the account is that bottom gray line. So you can see, because we have more money in the account right now that we need, um, it goes down over time, um, until eventually it kind of reaches an equilibrium, uh, until 2038, where, uh, we would have to, uh, figure something out. So there's two years in there, in 2030 and 2038, where the towns would have to make a decision on what to do with the social worker, uh, the position, and what to do, um, if they wanted to keep any of the other services, uh, that the Board of Health, or that we were providing through these funds. So, but basically, in summary, the, this plan, uh, reflects the input of the Foxborough residents and the individuals within the community with a lived experience. Um, it is recommended by public health, public safety, and schools. Uh, it supports multiple initiatives within several different town departments. It meets the statewide opioid settlement requirement, and it creates new school programming, um, a Foxborough peer-based support group, greater access to Narcan and wraparound services to residents. It creates a new part-time Substance Use Coordinator position with social worker credentials, and it doesn't create additional stresses on town departments, and maximizing our collaboration within the department. Um, it fully utilizes the opioid settlement funds while maximizing the benefits to the community, but it allows us the flexibility to change programming, uh, so we can do what works for Foxborough. So that's what I have. If anyone else would like to make a comment on this plan, um.
Okay, good evening. Um, so on behalf of the board, we voted, um, a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago.
Betsy, can you pull the microphone closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, we voted a few weeks ago, um, to support this final version of the plan, um, as a proposal, proposal to you guys. Um, it is a labor of love, um, between our board, um, police, fire, um, our, you know, the town social work, just everyone, and really keeping into account what we, um, what we heard. It's, um, ninety-six isn't a lot of people, but, you know, it's the heart of the people who did respond. Um, and you really wanna, what we're trying to do, as, at least for the next, it's gonna be over ten years, right? We're looking at this data, looking at how this, the money's being spent, looking at where the resources are needed. Um, this can be adjusted, like I, like my, um, I said, like, uh, Matt said, um, it's a initial proposal. Um, but our board will be looking at this very regularly, like anything else we look at very regularly. And, um, as a community, we're all planning on working together, um, and every year, and see what's working, what's not working. Um, if anyone wants to speak up on that, they can, but, um, we're just looking for your support to help support the town.
If I may, can I just, um, I just wanna commend this team, cause when we first started this conversation and all the folks in the room, it kind of felt like here and here, you know, public safety, and everybody had great ideas, and we all knew everybody was doing what they believed in, but it was here and here, and this group, all these people and more, got together and they met numerous times, and, you know, just, all of a sudden at the end, and I don't wanna say all of a sudden, cause it's, but I know they worked hard, but they came, they said, "We got it all worked out. We're good." And I'm like, "What?" So I just wanna commend this team for really working together, persevering, and finding solutions, and, um, hopefully this board agrees, but it, it was, for me, a very heartwarming exercise to see a group come together and find solutions to benefit the community. And it was really impressive.
Yeah, I went to one of the meetings and, and it did, it seemed like we were here, you know, not we, but here and there, and I was listening, cause I knew eventually it'd get to us. So, I guess, quick question I have. Maybe, uh, obviously Tom's here, representing Fire, Chief Grace is here, um, would, would possibly, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but if this position, this part-time position, so that'll be funded for five years, looks like, right? Five, six, okay. So, a- as, as we go along, and if we feel that that position is really doing what you're hoping it's gonna do, would then maybe, um, there'd be some, some type of, um, discussion probably between chief and chief, maybe with, with town manager to, to see if we could find the funds down the road? Is it, you know, so, you know, so that, um, if we find that that position is really doing what you want, that maybe... It's, it's, it's hard when you're getting money, when you get a, when you get grant money, and we always say, we, we hate to see it used on positions, cause eventually then it, you know, but it seems like you guys worked well, you know, came up with this plan, and then maybe that might be the goal somewhere down the line to, to, if it works, you know? And I know, e- everyone's gonna be shocked to hear this out of my mouth, right, but, you know, to, to make it permanent, or...
Shocked where you go.
Yeah, exactly.
Shocked.
Permanent or even full-time. I mean, li- listen, if, if, if it, if it's helping the community, it's helping the community. We all know this is a big problem. So would that be maybe something you guys be, I hate to push you five or six years down the road, but.
Well, we gotta think that way. So with, when we talk about the collaboration, and we talk about the gap in the needs of services, and Christina really hit it, what we're finding, what a lot of our clientele, uh, they're lacking services, and connecting people to services, and having that, that, that vessel, that pivot point, to actually have people who aren't enrolled in social services or math helps, the clinical social worker will be able to bridge that gap in a variety of different other things, especially, I mean, heaven forbid you ever have your kids, and there's an issue with substance abuse, and all of a sudden, it just happens, and you just found out. If you were to call your primary care and try to get into someone who specializes in substance abuse counseling, you're gonna go on the back burner for three or four weeks. This person who we're looking to define the position will have all of the license, just like Christina, as a licensed clinical social worker, who can help our residents, our fa- our families, our kids, in those crisis moments. But yes, we, we looked at the path, and we said, you know, "Give us five or six budget cycles. Let's evaluate this position, the services that are being delivered to the residents of Foxborough." And I, I don't see mental health going away. I don't see substance abuse going away. And if we are sitting, the Fire Chief, myself, and the whole team is sitting in front of the board, and sitting in front of Paige and Maria, saying, "Listen, this is what we have. This is our data for five years. This is what we're doing." We have to continue this. This is what the community needs. Then we'll have that discussion.
So, I guess my question is, we're in November already. The forty-one thousand, uh, for the position obviously can't be spent in full. There was another program out there that we originally was presented, which was the Interface Program, which is currently in place, which does part of what you're saying, helps connect, um, people to, uh, the resources that they need. Uh, the towns used it for a couple of years now, um, and had paid for it through different grants. Originally, that was discussed as a poten- potential to, uh, be using this funds. If you're, at this point in the year, you have that, the seventeen thousand that's needed by the fact that you can't hire somebody for twelve months in a seven-month, uh, period, uh, is it still something that could be considered, uh, to be funding? Uh, because that's where the additional money was expected to come from, from this year.
So I'm gonna let Christina take this over, but we wrestled with that program, and we did a breakdown of how many uses have occurred, how many were actually opiate-related, which was minimal. And then we, and Christina can expand on it. There's a huge portion of the settlement that went to the communities. Massive amounts went to the state, and they have now created that program for free, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, with licensed clinical social workers on the phone that we can now access, so we don't have to use our funds for that. Is that a?
But unfortunately, we already contracted for it, so.
Uh, yes. So, um, I, I think, you know, tabling the discussion about what, what the contract is, I understand that we've, we've come up with some of that difference in the budget through the schools, maybe, is my understanding.
Schools were expecting it was coming from the.
I see. Okay, so I think maybe I'm thinking back to a different conversation, but, uh, we have the Behavioral Health Helpline, which is funded by the state, like Chief Grace said. Uh, it is twenty-four seven. Uh, they come in two hundred different languages, including American Sign Language. We have had a beautiful service with Interface. It has supported us for a couple of years now. When we got that service, there was no Behavioral Health Helpline. There was really no alternative locally that was affordable, so I think it was a great service, and it provided a lot of people with, uh, you know, the services that they needed and the connections to care. However, uh, it feels like a duplicity to have both, uh, available to us, where, uh, as much as I really enjoyed William James Interface, it is restrictive. It's kind of like a Monday through Friday, nine to five, uh, English-speaking only. Um, and I find that when it's not during the school time, so they really run off, um, of interns primarily, and when school's not in session, it, it come, becomes kind of an issue getting connected to care that way. I've heard from some of my clients saying that, "Oh, I'm kind of on a waitlist. I haven't heard back." Not to say that they're not providing a great service, cause I think they provide us as good of a service as the Behavioral Health Helpline and vice versa. Um, but I just think the Behavioral Health Helpline offers some things that Interface does not, in terms of we can text the line. Um, and then like I mentioned, with the availability with languages and American Sign Language, I think, um, it, it has been all-encompassing. They also provide, um, substance use counseling, connections to care. So if you need connections to detox, or you need therapists that can work specifically around substance use disorders, um, they can also connect you that way. So, I feel like that is more of a one-stop shop, um, and I think that it's a little bit more all-inclusive. Um, and that is just my two cents, and I, I don't wanna speak for the board on what they would like to do with the other bits of funds, but, um, that's just what we're looking at in terms of other options. And, um, I, I understand that we've already rolled out the Interface, but I've been starting on my end to roll out a little bit more of the Behavioral Health Helpline, and starting to get more people familiar with that service, um, in, in anticipation of potentially having to pivot.
So, I guess my point, though, is, the Interface Program, which has served the town well, um, was in place before this other option with the state came in place. A decision had to be made last spring as to whether or not to move forward. The town chose to move forward. Part of that was that we had grants to cover part of it, and that we thought potentially the grants would, you know, uh, the opioid grant would cover the other part of it at this point. And again, you have the resources, cause you're not gonna be able to spend the forty-some odd thousand on the social worker this year, cause you're already halfway into the year. Um, why couldn't you solve that one by allowing it to close out this year, which is what I thought the intent was. It would be, this would be the last year of it, and then you're... last year of it, and then you're, the new program would take full force, now, obviously, it could still be in play during the year, um, and you haven't changed your budget at all, you're still in the same place you were, um, it would be different if you were hiring this position as of July first, which, obviously, you can't, 'cause we're in November, um, so I, I guess that's my only point, um, otherwise, there's, there's absolutely no funding to support this seventeen thousand dollars that was, you know, uh, approved, uh, prior.
And you, and...
So we have a bill of seventeen thousand we have to pay, is that what you're saying?
This is a contract.
Okay, so we have a bill, and we have to find out how to pay it.
Right.
If we, if we pay the bill, um, it, it, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the op- it's the opinion of this board to decide how we use the funds, but that then cuts into the, our ability to fund, um, the clinical social worker for a full six years, um, 'cause if, if we were budgeting, 'cause I budget, I mean, I mean, we'd just have to reassess that budget, right, so if we're budgeting six full years, um, even whenever, whether this person started in January or July, i- it's, it's six full years, um, that we, I mean, the chart was on, you know, it was just year by year, but, um, we just have to cut that contract short, um, and that's, that would be, that's just what we'd have to do, or, or move money out of the schools, or move money out of, um, harm reduction, or providing Narcan, so we just have to remove money from somewhere else.
Quick question?
Sure.
Um, when, when do the, when do we get the funds?
We have them.
We have, we have just over three hundred thousand currently.
I, I didn't know anything about this, and I apologize, Bill, but I kinda understand where Bill's coming from, that there is a gap, you know, having the funds and not having hired the social worker yet, that, that we'd be able to fill that gap rather easily, um, but...
Yeah, the only thing I would say to that is that these funds aren't like typical funds that go away at the end of the year, we're able to roll them over, um, so, we would potentially get to use those funds later on than we would normally, in a grant budget, where they just disappear, and we have to give them back, um, we do have other funds, we have like, six thousand dollars here and there, built into the, to the Board of Health, um, grant funds, if we consolidated that and used it to, toward Interface, if that's what they wanted to do with it, I mean, there's money to, to kinda make a decision and, and go a different way, if that's what the town wants.
So, so just, I wanna make sure I, I have this clear, so, this seventeen thousand dollars has to come from somewhere, your contract...
It's actually, I think the total is like thirty...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one thousand, yeah, okay, and there was a grant that was covering the cost, um, that, um, was being managed by, um, not council on aging, but...
Oh, yeah, Human Services.
Human Services, and the, the grant only had enough to cover a portion of this year, and that's why some of the conversations were had, to say, "Well, if we need to keep this thing going for a year, how can that be done, this way?" Secondarily, the, the conversation was potentially that this free one would be coming online, but it wasn't, you know, in, it wasn't in place and online at the time, and therefore, you know, we weren't using it as a community, um, the community is using the Interface Program, has used it, um, quite a bit, I don't know how much has been toy- towards the opioid side of it, but there has been quite a bit of use on that, um, and I'm just saying, close that program out as part of this, let the new one take over, once that's completed, um, and, you know, to the point that, yes, I get your six-year cycle or, or wish, but that's, that's out there, right now, this is what we currently have facing us, so...
Was the, um, wasn't there allocation in the school budget to pay the rest of that?
No.
I recall the discussion of such a...
We had a meeting where that was brought up.
I have an email here, that says, we, from you, Bill, that says, "The schools have put aside seventeen thousand dollars towards its balance from a one-time grant, FY twenty-six will be another story," I know, but you said for this, so, we all budgeted that seventeen thousand we thought was coming from the schools, so...
No, it was coming from the grant, which we thought was the opioid grant.
Okay.
I just had a question, in terms of reducing harm and reducing fatalities, how effective is Narcan for fentanyl overdose?
Tom, Tom?
Yeah.
Let's go.
The only way.
Tom, I'm sorry. Tom thought he was gonna hide back there and just get away with it.
Good evening, everyone, so Narcan itself is very effective, it's an opioid antagonist, which means it competes with the body receptors that receive an opioid, which causes respiratory depression, um, what we're seeing now is, I, I think over the last five years, we updated the board, and we began talking about these, these issues, um, we actually gave Narcan thirty-seven times for actual overdoses, but what we're seeing is a great deal of opioid-related emergencies, so we're seeing folks who endured, um, a series of collateral traumas, whether it be domestic violence, sexual assault, um, you know, medically-induced opioid dependency, um, so when we think about Narcan itself, I mean, these are, these are topical general public health measures, where we get Narcan in the community, so it's there, um, Narcan now is over the counter at CVS, Walgreens, but it's, it can be rather expensive, so these grants can, can offset a lot of those costs, Narcan's very easy to administer, um, it's, over the years, it's been concentrated into these small devices that give you four milligrams and zero-point-one mls of fluid, it's, it's introduced into the nasal cavity, um, just one quick little shot, and then, what happens is, the medication is absorbed through the mucous membranes, and then actually reverses the opioid, which induces breathing, so it combats that, that effect on the respiratory drive, um, what happens when folks on fentanyl overdose, what we're seeing now is, is, you know, the, the crux of, of EMS, we saw a very large surge, maybe fifteen, twenty years ago, of heroin, now it's turning into fentanyl, it's not just fentanyl now, fentanyl's being mixed with other medications, Xylazine is probably the most common one now, which is a veterinary sedative, which prolongs the effects, so even if we give folks Narcan, we're still, we're still rendering care to manage their way into managing oxygenation, um, so, to your, to your question, Narcan is very effective, um, and Narcan is relatively safe, um, there really is no known allergies to Narcan, the only times you run into issues with Narcan, if someone's on long-term substance therapy, such as Suboxone and Methadone, and you reverse those, those patients take those medications and can actually live just normal lives, um, without having the cravings, um, some of the medications that, you know, um, we, that are used to treat that can react suddenly with Narcan, because you all of a sudden cause a sudden withdrawal, so those are things that we, we're very cognizant of as well, uh, but those folks are, if you were in the far between, we think about overdoses, and the overdoses that we see, you know, tend to be, um, uh, looking at the numbers, more of a seasonal type thing, or more of a geographic and linear sign area, so we, we start to kinda see these trends, and that's what we're trying to, you know, work with Health Department and work with the Police Department in terms of, where can we put these caches of Narcan, what can we have Sharps collection boxes, and the like.
Good, thank you.
I, um, appreciate all the work that you've done, and all the people that have come together, I'm one of those people that never believes in paying for a position without it coming from taxation, however, I think that the plan that you've brought forward, and the way that you've demonstrated it going out several years, I feel comfortable with making a change in that, in that thought process of mine, um, it was a lot of work, I, I wasn't fully expecting the, the, the completion of it tonight, but it, it looks great, good job.
Absolutely. I think the only other thing that I would add is that it's a little, um, my feeling is that if you've committed the money to go to that program, that, I, I, I know it, it puts a little...
It wasn't committed because the Board of Health didn't approve it, it was, it was questioned as whether or not that would be the possibility, which it seemed like it was a high likelihood it would, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's an approved use of the funds, but it wasn't approved yet, so, I mean, you could use it for that if, you know, but when the team got together and talked, you know, we decided, you know, this way was the best way to go for Foxborough residents to, you know, affect their lives the most.
And so the good thing is, to kinda put a cherry on it, first of all, I think we can resolve this, like, I think if you're pr- prone to, you might wanna just support this as proposed, I think between Marie, Brandon, all, we'll figure out a way to address that seventeen thousand dollar shortfall, um, I don't think we wanna jeopardize such a well-thought-out program, Marie, shoot me if I'm going too far on it, but I think we could do that, um, and now I just forgot my point, but I think that's, you know, I think we'll find a way, and, um, you know, if the board were interested in going, we'll, we'll find a way to get this done.
Okay.
I have one other point, I just don't...
That sounds okay with you, Bill?
It's fine.
Yeah, I just, I just hate to see, like, then where does the money come from, you know, from, from somewhere else, so...
Oh, I know what my point, sorry, is that while you might feel that it, this was committed back in, like, June, January, July, so we've had a half a year, so, as much as we might be saying, "Oh, shucks, we shouldn't have signed up for Interface," I think it's good we did, because it's been providing that service from, you know, back when, it's provided continuity of care, so we're not, as to your all point, we don't have yet a social worker to supplement Christina, so this is a good supplement while we get up and running, as you move into behavioral, so, it's, it's a little frustrating, you know, in the sense that we're, we're aging out of it, kind of, but we are using it, and I think the schools are probably still using it right now, it, it's still a service, so it's not a waste, it's just perhaps time to move on.
Musical cheers, next time we have to have eight cheers up here. I just wanted to say that the collaboration that we've had made us going forward, that we've committed, that we're gonna be working on the opioid programs together with public health and public safety, and that will make all of our programs stronger, and so that's something that everybody should think about, that we're all thinking about the community, and we're not working in silos, but we're working, um, together. Yep. No, I mean, li- listen, love all this, but you use the word commitment, when I hear there was a commitment to fund something, and, so, th- that's, that's where I, you know, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that up to you, that you think this will be able to get worked out, I mean, you know, okay, all right, well, I don't want the, you know, some hand, you know, we're short seventeen thousand, when, you know, this is something that had been being used and was somewhat committed to, you know, to be funded, so you're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 'cause you do know this is our decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, anybody else have any questions, or...
Nope.
Okay, so, are we, um, are we voting on this this evening, or, or... Yeah. Okay. All prepared to vote? Would you feel better if there was some discussion, well, funding that money first, before we actually make a vote?
Yep.
Okay, all right, make a motion.
Vote on the town's funding, vote to approve the town's funding strategy for the use of opioid abatement funds.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi, Doug.
Hi.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good work.
Thank you.
One other thing about Maggie and Lance, I'm all set with it, coming before you, we're good, with public safety.
You're not gonna stay? Oh, we...
Actually, Mike, come on, go check the polls.
Yeah. Oh, no. Okay, then I just, uh, went out, okay, okay, uh, tax, uh, tax classification public hearing.
The Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Act Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-six, on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven forty-five PM at Foxborough Town Hall, Gaylord Room Forty-South Street, Foxborough, Mass. O-two-O-three-five, for the purpose of determining the percentages of the FY twenty-twenty-five local property tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Hi.
Okay, you're up.
All set?
Yep.
All right, so we have about, um, twenty, twenty-five slides to go through, um, try to do that as, not as quickly, but it's just hopefully you, you've got them beforehand, you, you've had a chance to read them, hopefully you kind of understand them, I know it's a lot of information, um, I have Dan Smith here from the board, and obviously Marie, so I'll just get right into it. So, um, twenty-twenty-five was a big year for the Assessors' Office, um, we went through five-year certification, uh, with the Department of Revenue, um, so, it was a lot of work, and a lot of consultants, and a lot of coordination, and, um, we have an overview of the tax classification hearing coming, shift options we'll go over, we'll go over the Foxborough's current values, levy limit history, trends in the market, nearby local communities, recommendations impact on the, on the average bills, and you'll have your motions at the end. So like I said, the, the, we had a lot of, uh, work this year in the five-year cycle, and the process began in March of twenty-four, with a review of the values and sales data from twenty-twenty-three, we increased the cost-related tables due to construction-related increases based on typical industry standards, martial and swifts, and co-logic, we, we reviewed the neighborhood and land values and adjusted those necessary, and we reviewed all commercial sales and increased or decreased those various land use values based on the sales, overall market outlook, and individual property characteristics. So the results indicated the following, single-family values increased by five percent, condos by eight percent, commercial-industrial by six percent, which is more than last year, which was three percent, because we, at, at the five-year period, we do a more thorough review of commercial values in town, um, just for, is the single families went up twelve percent last year, they're only going up five percent this year, on average, or median, and we, we had a big increase in the personal property due to audits that we completed on major taxpayers, new businesses, and during a five-year, we do a full inspection on all six-hundred-plus personal property accounts. So the purpose of the tax classification hearing is to set the minimum residential factor for the town, which will determine the shift, the tax burden between the residents in the commercial class, also known as the shift, the Select Board vote the following options, the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, and, as I stated, the minimum residential factor. He, as stated, the additional shift options is the residential exemption, this shifts up to twenty percent of the average assessed value, shifts the tax burden between the different values, between the lower-priced homes to the higher-priced homes, application of this option is in major cities and Cape Towns with seasonal properties, eighteen of three-hundred-and-fifty-one communities have this option, Foxborough's never implemented this option, and the Board of Assessors has recommended to decline this option. The other option is the small commercial exemption, this exempts the ten percent of the assessed value, which shifted, requires an extensive analysis on business operations, less than a million of value, and less than ten employees, it will not help those leasing a business base as the exemption goes to the property owner, the other commercial industrial class would also have a tax increase, fourteen of three-hundred-and-fifty-one municipalities have this option, Foxborough's never implemented this option, and the Board of Assessors has recommended to decline this option as well. So the classification of the property, property values overall, so a little bit different this year, as residential went down slightly, commercial went up, and industrial's about the same, and personal property also went up, um, that's just the trends, and what we saw, I think was most likely due to our five-year valuation, where we looked at commercial property, and more extensively, as, as is required by the Department of Revenue. The, this is just an depiction of those statistics in a pie chart, we are, Foxborough's obviously still primarily a, a residential community, um, but we do have a significant commercial se- sector, which a lot of towns don't have, and probably jealous of Foxborough, because it's very difficult, uh, economically, without a good commercial class, Foxborough's very fortunate. So this chart just indicates that, um, I found interesting that the commercial class in Foxborough, as I just indicated, is very strong, it's the highest in the area, and the apartment values as well, 'cause we do have those larger apartment complexes in town, is higher than anybody else, uh, in the, in the area. Now, the levy limit is the amount a community raises through real estate and personal property tax, and then you add the two-and-a-half percent, and the new growth to get the, um, the levy limit total, and then the pro- proposed levy limit for this year is sixty-one million eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-six, a five-point-four percent increase from last year, largely due to new growth. This is just a depiction of what was just stated, and you can see, the levy generally goes up four to five percent a year, um, pretty much a straight line. The trends, trends in the market, prices are going up. They continue to go up. It's, you'll see in another chart that I think since 2019 to 20, to now, the prices and values gone up about 37%. It's really pretty incredible where they're going. Mortgages are actually increasing because people are refinancing a lot. But the overall sales activity is still kind of down. It's not where it used to be. And I think that's due to interest rates and just not a lot of activity, probably nervous about the election. Things tend to slow down at times. So the average values, as I indicated, everything is up. Residential's, the average residential value is $645,717, where the average sale price is actually $727,603. So those are, you know, significantly high numbers. You'll see the commercial is indicating that big jump that we talked about. The average value is at $2.5 million now. But all values are increasing overall. So the new growth, we had a very good year in new growth. There's a lot of activity on the commercial side this year with large apartments and big box stores and, and the audits that were completed. This all positively impacted the, the new growth. And as I indicated, the highest on record since 2010, so. The residential construction history, as you can see, residential construction is, is generally down in town just because we don't have any land. There's nowhere to put new, big subdivisions and things like that. We do have tier downs. We do have people starting from scratch or buying and converting to condo or whatever. That activity is not, not shown there on the 4 and 4. But overall, there just is not a lot of land in town to add. I think we have maybe two or three smaller subdivisions right now. This chart indicates the comparison between the other towns, just in population demographics. But you look at the last column, that 2024 shift is actually, on average, is what Foxborough did last year, the 1.25 shift. So you fell right where everybody else more or less did. As far as the tax rates go, Foxborough is somewhat near the, kind of higher on, on the higher end, but high middle, as of last year. Where it ends up this year, I don't know because of the shift. But in general, I can tell you that tax rates are going down residential and commercial pretty significantly. Values are going up 5%, which is actually is not bad, but your tax rates are going to be coming down. And it'd be interesting to see where it falls next year compared to other towns. Commercial, similar, similar to $17.99 per thousand, similar to the residential. And then we get into the proposed changes for this year. We looked at various options and discussed with the Board of Assessors where they would like to see things fall this year. And based on that discussion, the average increase would be $313 for residential on a 1.23 shift. So you'd actually drop the shift by two points, saves a little bit on the commercial side, but also it drops the average increase on the residential side. So it kind of was a, a nice fit. You'll see on the commercial side, their average increase is significant, but they also had a significant value increase, so that's showing up in their, the average increase at the one, at the 1.23 shift, 1.23%. The average industrial is pretty much in line with what's been in the past. Values for industrial are significantly less than commercial. Yep. So this just shows, what I just discussed, the proposal is for an average increase of $313 on a single-family home, $2,297 on a commercial, and $288 on, on industrial. This shift here, this is actually a 2023 shift. So it's, it's two years ago. It just shows that the shifts, what they were back then. Kind of, you would look at '24 basically as to see last year. We already talked about that, which was an average of 1.25. But you do see significant shifts here from Walpole, Rantham, and Plainville, the homeless to 1.3. So this is where the primary options fell. And what I looked at and the board looked at to find some kind of happy medium. And that's why we selected the 1, 2, 3. We think that's, that's fairly equitable. It, first it looked at 1.22, but that was gonna be, no, sorry, 1, 2, 5, which was last year, is if we had kept that, commercial would have been looking at a 3,000-plus increase. We thought that was too much. So the 1, 2, 3 seem like it's out of a good medium position. So the BOA recommends a shift back to 1.23 from 1, 2, 5 to assist the commercial property increases for '25 while maintaining a lower residential increase to 313. Is, is lower than it's been in the past couple of years, so we thought that was equitable position. And that chart is just, this is where all the information comes from, from the Department of Revenue gateway system. And we narrow it down so it's kind of readable for you guys. It's, you don't want to look at a chart like that. You go blind. We'll do that for you. So in summary, the select board must select that minimum residential factor to set the tax rate and vote on the options. The Board of Assessors recommends the minimum residential factor of .9404, 1.23 shift, and to decline the other options. The new tax rate will be 1322 for residents, a 29-cent decrease. And 70-cent decrease for our commercial to 1729. And the LA5 excess capacity for the year would be 61,123. So I know that's a lot to process, but I try to keep it as simple as I can. To me, it is, I know it's, it's a lot, but I can answer any questions you might have.
Tom, do you remember what the average increase was last year? Was it like 280-something? Do, do you remember off the top of your head?
Yeah, it's, it's in the 370 last year.
370 last year?
Yeah, but for residents, yeah.
And then this year, we're looking at?
313.
313. And another kind of a funny question. I've had a couple of people ask me, I don't know if this is something that any other town does or something we do. People have asked me if, and I said, well, we've never seen it. We've, we funded all kinds of projects. But, so when we have like certain debt that comes on, like say for coming up DPW building, is, is there, does any town ever do a breakdown of what your, what your taxes are, like?
The impact?
Why someone asked me was because they said, you know, we hear something comes on and we don't know when it comes off. You know, we, we hear that shift, like, okay, something's coming off the books, something's coming on the books. Is, is, is that even something that any town does or would do?
Marie can talk to that a little about the.
So you're talking about the debt exclusions?
Yeah, like, you know, basically the question was, you know, we went to town meeting, we approved X amount of projects. We know there's going to be debt exclusion. They were wondering, how come we can't see on our tax bill, like how much of the bill is going to each one? And so that, you know, I mean, I guess you'd have to keep track of them. I mean, these debt exclusions go for what, 20 years or plus?
Years, yeah.
Right? So I, I, just a question, you know, I'm not pushing for that. I, I just, you know, when they asked, I said, jeez, I have no, absolutely no idea. Like, I've never seen, seen it. Do other towns like show where the money is going or?
I mean, you can show the impact based on the value of your home. I mean, you'd have to sit down and do a, kind of a deep analysis, like on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, because everybody's going to be different depending on what the value of their home is.
Mm-hmm.
So I can say in Franklin, because we did get an override, you know, for our high school, and I feel like the first year we had an override, we did get like property tax and then like an itemization of whatever the 300X number dollars was. But now I'm not sure I see that anymore. So I think it was maybe a one-time, but then again, like I don't think in, you're probably talking more in perpetuity. You'd like to see this much is just your regular levy, this is much the old, you know, debt from the town hall or, you know, the middle school's coming out. You want to see that, and that would probably be virtually impossible. But we might be, I feel like in Franklin, we did see one year of increment, but that wouldn't.
But Marie, isn't it, maybe I'm oversimplifying. The, when you look at back on slide 11 where it shows the debt exclusion, the 1, 8, $1.8 million, that's the amount that's being paid under the debt exclusion for this year.
Yes.
So effectively, it's a factor of that by the residential rates.
That gets divided out.
Yeah, so it's really not that hard to calculate if you think about it. I mean, it's less than 3%, you know, of the levy is, is based on the debt exclusions. So.
And that number, this is the current fiscal year, it doesn't reflect the new projects. So this number is actually going to go up. But it's partially offset because the, I was actually just looking at this earlier. One of the public safety building bond issuances and I believe the Hearn School were dropping off in '26. So, but I can, perhaps in the budget book, I can think of something I can add there just to kind of highlight that and what the impact truly is for these additional projects.
I think the point that, and correct me if I'm wrong here, I think the, the point that basically taxpayers are trying to say is if you, if I look at my tax bill and I look back like the last three years, has it been fairly consistent for the debt exclusion side, which I think it has? But they want to know that it's not doing this type of thing or it's not doing this. Actually, it's probably what they're more concerned about.
Yeah.
And so I think if there was any way for us to kind of show, you know, a three-to-five year thing, that the debt exclusions basically have been right in this line, then I think people don't feel like, you know, they're taking on a bigger risk every time we do a project.
Yeah, I, I had no idea of that. I mean, the questions came up and I said, jeez, I have, I don't know. She said, how come, she said, we just have no way of knowing, you know, I mean, I guess if you listen, you know, at town meeting or as we're, you know, you know, we, you know, approved a project and, and we say it's going to be 20 years. So I guess, you know, maybe they're just trying to see what their tax money.
Yeah. It's harder for a taxpayer in the general sense because they don't get or look at all the documentation. But Marie does put together a debt schedule, which is in the, the big financial book that we all get. But again, I don't think taxpayers tend to look at that. You can actually see what, what it's done. But I think when you ask the question, how does it impact me on my house? That's, again, can be done on the sample house or the average house. And you could just say, this is what your tax bill has been and this is what the debt exclusion portion has been over a period of time.
Yeah, for everybody to get that on their tax bill would be next to impossible.
But maybe what we could do using Mara and, you know, if Marie gets a chance, we could put together something for the website, have a page of that. Because it's a question probably throughout time, everybody's going to wonder and be neat to know, like we were always looking at, well, what's falling off in '26? We could have it there and then you know what's coming off. And then you might not have exact numbers, but you can kind of see, well, X amount is going on for the three projects we did. But oh, the good news is this much coming off and kind of track it. So we could commit to trying to get something on the website.
And that's a lot of times we use those comparisons for people to come into town meeting and vote for a project. So, so they know that, oh, okay, we're taking on, you know, another $20 million worth of projects, but yeah, but $20 million is coming off or $15 million is coming off.
And we did use, for town meeting, the Department of Revenue has an online calculator where you, literally you load in what your debt service amount is, and it does give you a chart that has all of the, like, values from 100,000 to 2 million. And it tells you what the estimated impact will be. What I can do is once we actually do the bond, because right now we're just playing with estimated numbers. Once we actually do the bond sale, we'll know the actual amount. And at that point, I think we could do something that this person is looking for. And I'm sure the others would appreciate as well.
Any questions, thanks?
Nope.
Very clear, very well done.
Thank you.
You simplify it really well, year after year.
I try.
Well, and so when you guys are, and the board is sitting down, for you guys to go through all of this and then determine what's the best way and what's the best rate, do you basically say, okay, this is our known debt for, for next year? You know, you know, whether you're gonna look and say, okay, just project salaries, you know, not knowing we have new contracts coming up, so is, do you, do you come up with a number and then kind of find out how we're gonna?
No, we don't do it.
Like, what makes you determine?
No, it's, it's, it is strictly developed based on if you, that original slide because that's all they can do. Now the question is what percentage goes where?
Okay.
You can't, you can't change the amount, no matter what our budget issues are.
Whoever gets the tax burden is what you're trying to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get one pie. We're always dealing with one piece of pie.
So we're allowed to do two and a half because that's what it says. Unless we do an override and then you go from there?
Yep.
As many times as I've heard this presentation at this table, at, at AdCom, it's very confusing.
You have a motion? Am I closing this hearing?
Yeah, just close the hearing first.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the proposed tax rate and exemptions for Foxborough FY '25.
So is that all we have to do is?
No, you should, you should, it's like multiple motions you should do. First would you should be vote no on the open space discount?
Right.
And then residential exemption, then the small commercial exemption, and then the factor is the last. So you have four motions to do.
So if we go back to his original.
So they're up top there.
Yeah, they're right on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the screen. Screen.
Make it easy for you.
Oh. Can you put it back? Oh.
Back, back up one. Oh, now he's.
Oh, boy.
We give you this.
Yeah.
He got it, he got it.
Motion to vote no on open space discount.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to vote no on residential exemption.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to vote no on a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to set the minimum residential factor to .9404, moving to 1.3 shift or other as voted.
1.23.
1.23, yeah.
1.23, excuse me. Shift or as other, or other as voted.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Marie?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, Catherine. First of all, how are you feeling?
Much better. And I thank you all for allowing me a couple of weeks to recover.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We got, we could close everything and then just have this discussion after it was closed. So we were, we were happy. And I, I said to Paige, I said, well, I said, the last thing she's wanting to do is schlep in here. And then she said you were going to zoom in with us. And I, I said, when you're sick, I said, I said, we want, we want 100% of her, so.
Yeah, no, that was a rough one. And I hear that Katie's coming down with similar. All the, all the little kids are getting pneumonia and it's been walloping the parents more than the kids.
Yeah. They're saying that, they're saying that the treatment is not working the way it normally does, so.
Sure didn't for me, so.
All right, we just got to wait for the boys to come back.
Certainly. I knew it was bad when Catherine was on the public hearing for the planning board. And I think I heard her say, I have my camera off because I have to lay on this one side in order not to cough. And I'm thinking, this poor woman is laying on a certain side to give a public hearing presentation.
Worst part is the, like, the muscles around the ribs on that side are still in horrible pain. Like, so I haven't had a cough that was that painful since I had a C-section for my younger kid and I happened to have a cough when I had to have the C-section. And that was excruciatingly painful. But whatever I had this time around was a second, just because I was coughing so much that like all these muscles were so sore. And yeah, it's taking like months for this to recover over here.
So did you have pneumonia?
I had pneumonia and it was not diagnosed.
Was it walking pneumonia?
Yeah.
That, because that's what I guess is what's happening, right?
But they didn't, the problem is they didn't diagnose. You went like two or three weeks.
I had two chest x-rays, three weeks apart, and both were clear, then the infection migrated to my sinuses, so I finally got antibiotics, and within two days, my cough was almost gone. It just wasn't showing up, for some reason.
It's good to see you back.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, everybody at home knows, we did close the warrant without voting on the MBTA articles, whether we were going to support, support it or not support it, as you were hearing, Catherine was very sick, so we closed up everything, and then we brought her in tonight, so, has, how did you want, how, did you want to give us a mini version? I mean, I think we've all went to certain meetings, but I don't think you have to go from start to finish.
Sure, yeah, I'm gonna be pretty quick, I eliminated practically all of the slides.
And if we, if anything, that we still have questions on, we can always.
Absolutely.
Then go there.
Okay, sure. So we can start.
You have the.
Oh, I have, where is it?
To the right.
You gotta push, point it to Mr. Beck, in the back. No?
No.
Usually, there you go. There we go. All right, so we'll go through the two different warrants tonight, and why there are two warrants, as well as going through some of the build-out scenarios with some maps. What is MBTA communities? You all know this, for anybody watching at home, this is a state requirement signed into law in 2021. It affects 177 Massachusetts communities, including Foxborough. It is a requirement to zone for by right multifamily housing near train stations, or smart growth districts. So, we're trying to find a way to be in compliance with the state, but ultimately, land use runs through town meeting, so it's up to the residents which of the two models that we present to them, or neither, they want to vote for. What can happen if the town votes against a compliant district? There are, this is a lot of text, and it's all saved on the internet, but the long and short of it is, there are multiple grants that are affected, grants outside of the ones that have been presented in the state legislation, as well as the guidelines, have been affected in Milton. We also stand to lose access potentially to federal earmarks through our congressional representative, who is supporting the legislation in that way. We also face possible civil enforcement action by the Attorney General's Office, as we've seen in the town of Milton, and whatever remedies the court may decide through that vehicle. So, those are the possible drawbacks if the town does not vote for either of these models. We did a lot of community engagement, we had five in-person workshops, and these ran from August to October, starting with the questions of what happened last time, because this is voted on at town meeting in spring, all the way up to developing the different models, after getting some feedback from residents, particularly those that were most affected. We did release an internet survey on town website and Facebook, obviously, that's an imperfect tool. Back when I worked in Attleboro, we released one on the top dog that was registered that year, and people find ways to cheat, no matter what, right? But the good news is that we got enough votes, and the differences were negligible, and echoed exactly what we heard in the public meetings. So for all intents and purposes, the two options that rose to the top, rose to the top in both the public meetings, as well as through the survey, so I think that they reinforce each other. We have already received our EOHL-C review. They had one minor discussion on some of the wording in the warrant, but I discussed it with them. Basically, they wanted us to not include language that considered things like scale and massing, but when I discussed with them that that was part of site review anyway, that removing those words wouldn't necessarily remove the town's ability to factor those criteria in, they agreed with me, and they said, you can leave it as is. So, they are okay with both models, they find them to be compliant, and they were okay with the language in the warrant, so that's all good news, coming out of EOHL-C. There was one minor item flagged by our town council, that they did send to the AG just for a second opinion, but if it comes back, it's going to be a very, very minor wording change, so we'll let you know as soon as that happens, if it happens, but hopefully, everything will stay as is, right before you. Finally, we're going to be doing a recorded interview sometime this week, hopefully, between myself and town council, just to inform residents that we're unable to participate in the process, give them a little bit more beef on the bones. Why two warrants? Just to provide people more options. Not everybody was able to participate through any of our community options, so I did, from the start, want to have two different options on the warrant. I know that's kind of a funky structure, but this is also a unique state requirement, so I thought that options are good in this situation, will give people a couple of different bites at the apple, and, you know, we're working out how it will work in terms of process. The first warrant will be read, discussion will be open on both warrants at once, that way, people won't be voting on the first warrant without having the information about the second one, too, so we'll make sure that people are informed about both. So, I'm not going to get too deep into the models and the estimates, all of these are based off of massing, that can be, that can be constructed, assumptions that I made as to what is developable, what is not, due to topographical issues and other things. So, you know, it's all crystal ball stuff, but it's a really good exercise to go through it, just to try to figure out, how do zoning decisions flow through the different areas of the town, and the services that are required, the taxes that are received, whether it's commercial or residential in certain areas. So, we did, we did perform it, and I'll go through some of the impact analysis at the very end, but first, let's, let's look at the maps. The option one is the Patriot Place scenario. This would allow for a little bit more development than the other option. Some of the pros is that it is one context to develop, it's all very close to the train station, very close to Patriot Place and the stadium, it strengthens the consumer base for existing businesses, allowing for new businesses as well, and the tax revenues and building permit fees would be pretty high in this area. Some of the cons, because a lot of this is surface parking, there, it does allow for some immediate development. Over Patriot Place itself, because there are buildings there and viable businesses, you're less likely to see immediate disruption, but within the surface lots, it could, it could allow for immediate construction. You do lose some of the tools for control of future development, because this is by right zoning, and given who the property owner is, this is somebody who could potentially build very quickly, and as long as they're building according to the zoning, basically, we have to allow it. We have a couple of tools to our disposal, but not a lot if it's by right. It does allow for the largest number of new residential units that could potentially be built, and it concentrates growth in one school district. So, build-out analysis, like I said, this is based off massing that I did, I used a median size for these buildings, of the medical office building to the right, it's like, just north of the stadium, and it's the kind of wedge-shaped building there. So, that's 1.5 acres, that's in line, more or less, with the median of the site, and I was able to get a lot of new buildings out of that, and again, back of envelope stuff. I did assume two redeveloped buildings within the existing footprint of Patriot Place, because those are all a little bit smaller, that's 1.25 acres each. I did assume that 25% of building square footage is retail on the first floor, that is because a lot of these buildings, if they're fully residential, they're probably going to have podium-style parking underneath, if it's a brand-new build, so that would be a 0% retail. But then, if you were to redevelop, or extend the Patriot Place walkable aspect of it, or use existing parking in new ways, you could potentially have a full 100% ground floor, so I thought that 25% was a reasonable estimate in this context. Each building's limited to 19 housing units per acre under this model, because of the acreage, it's 58.45, I believe, acres, so we were able to reduce our building per acre count, because our unit capacity is 1,152, but if you have a district that's a little bit larger than 50 acres, you can reduce that. And then, finally, the assumptions are that the hotel, medical office buildings and parkings are, they stay as is, because they're lucrative and they're permanent structures.
So, your estimate on that one, if you don't mind me stopping as you're going, is basically under 400 units, around 350 units?
Thereabouts, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, the second option is a sub-district scenario. This map shows the core of Patriot Place, the retail buildings themselves, the hotels, the medical office buildings, the parking associated with them, as well as a little corner that goes, you know, right in front of the stadium where ticketing currently is. So, that, the other, this one has two different sub-districts, which are allowable under the MBTA guideline, community guidelines, as long as they're over five acres in size, both of these are. They cover existing multifamily areas that are close to retail and dining options, so, you know, these are, these are feasibly walkable areas, and they meet the definitions of MBTA communities. The pros to this one is that it spreads new growth across three school districts, it limits development opportunity within the radius of the redevelopment of Patriot Place alone, so, you know, Patriot Place will stay as it is, more or less, aside from any, any building up. Sub-districts are already multifamily areas, so the context remains the same, and some of the cons are that more butters exist in the sub-district areas, and that provides different development contexts, different, you know, different types of uses around these areas, and they require some frontage that can open up some undeveloped acreage. So, within the sub-districts themselves, I was pretty conservative in the multifamily area, in estimating, like, what could potentially feasibly be constructed here, so I think some of these numbers are high, so when we get to the impact analysis, you know, you can probably discount whatever, whatever is shown in terms of services, because of the topography. If you go to the lodge, there's, on the very southern piece of it, there's some wooded area that could potentially be redeveloped, except when you go out there, the topography's like a cliff, it's about like, 10 to 12-foot drop. So, could they do it feasibly? It would cost a lot of money, there would be some real engineering challenges to doing it. With the Sylvan, they're similar, there's like, a ridge that you can actually see on the map, is like a lighter area, before the wooded area, on the right side of that parcel towards the 99 restaurants, and that's, again, that's a topographical drop. So, if anything were to be built there, it would, it would require a lot of really careful engineering, either they would have to raise up the area, or they would have one unit that's kind of detached from the whole, which developers don't usually like to do, particularly in this, this type of environment. So, you know, I'm, again, I'm being cautious, but feasibly, you can put four buildings on those sites. So this is my build-out analysis. Again, two redeveloped buildings within the existing footprint of Patriot Place, at 1.25 acres each, so in this case, again, I'm just talking about what, the buildings as they stand now, over time, maybe, maybe a couple of those will be demolished and rebuilt with, with housing above. Four new multifamily-only buildings located in the sub-districts, with an estimated 80 units across them. Each building's limited to 21 housing units per acre, and, again, this is higher because the acreage in this model's a little bit lower than the last one, so we're closer to that 50-acre minimum for our district, so dividing out that 1,152 unit capacity over the 50 acres, you get a little bit more density than the last model. However, it's not out of context, really, for the site, particularly, the Sylvan was just about 15 units per acre, so it's not a lot more than what's there now. So, when it comes to impact analysis, a couple things to note here, there's a line item for building permit fees, those are one-time fees, and I only included building permits, because we also have electrical and plumbing and all that stuff, I'm not an expert, I couldn't even begin to estimate what those would cost. When it comes to the property taxes, those are recurring annual revenues that could be anticipated for developments of this nature. I did lean heavily on all my department head colleagues, from the assessor, to the police chief, to the school department, trying to get good estimates. The way that most of these expenses work is by threshold, so, there's a certain number of units that can be absorbed, given the infrastructure the town already has. When it comes to the actual brick-and-mortar infrastructure, all of that can be absorbed as is. Our superintendent of DPW believes that because the water system, the sewer system, are all independently, privately managed by the Kraft Group, there's already overbuilt capacity on those sites, he didn't foresee any need for the expansion of those services, it's already built out in terms of traffic, to withstand Super Bowl traffic, so, he didn't have a lot of concerns about specifically the Patriot Place area, but because the two multifamily housing developments are close to the freeway, same thing. The safety services are based off of the need for one new officer at a certain level of new units, and then an additional officer at another level of new units. Fire, it was a little bit more complicated, because we have a plan that's fairly recent that calls for staffing 10 people per shift between firefighters, paramedics. We're not there yet, that's needed kind of immediately, so that was factored in there, and it's kind of like a straight line throughout, but once it's in there, once it's baked in, the rest of the units could be absorbed through those 10-person shifts. So that was kind of a straight-line item that ran throughout, no matter what the unit load was. The one item that, that safety services might need is over a certain level of units, and this could affect the model near Patriot Place, they would need to look at the need for a new fire substation. It wasn't something that the chief brought up independently, it was something that I asked about, like, whether that could potentially be an option, he said, yeah, you know what, we would probably want to take a look at it over a certain number of units, and that would affect the Patriot Place version, it would not affect the sub-district model. School expenses, that was done by per student estimate, and we used the student, like, a median student per unit estimate, coming from both the lodge and the Sylvan. They're roughly about the same number of students per unit, I think one was a little less, and one was a little more, than 0.15 students per unit. So that was the, I think that's a high-end estimate, when it comes to the area within the radius itself, particularly since we removed the affordability requirement from the warrant. Parents that are looking for homes for a young family are probably not going to want to live right near the stadium, if they could, if they had a choice, and if there's no affordability requirement, they're not, they're not going there because they have to, because they don't have a choice. So my guess is, that's high, in terms of the school expense, but we're being conservative with these figures. Again, because I don't think that all four of those units or buildings are going to be built in the sub-districts due to the topographical issues, the annual net gain-loss is negative in that model, I don't know if it really will be or not, I'm being as conservative as possible. If nothing gets built there, there are no changes to what's already needed. If things do get built there, it might be a little bit of a cost, but again, we're doing the best we can with the numbers that we have. So, those are, those are all my comments now, I'm happy to take any questions you have, because I did go over, like, you know, a month's worth of work in a few minutes here, so.
So, a couple points, the option two build-out, if I'm looking at this properly, is 130 units, max, the way you're looking at it. I tend to agree with you, I think if the lodge or the Sylvan could have built those additional buildings because of the site, they would have proposed them originally, because they had no restrictions not to be able to put those on there. So, I think it is a very hard build on both of those. I think they're both in areas that have proven not to be really an effect on the community as far as other neighbors on sides of them. I know the Sylvan, obviously, was one that was very concerning to a number of residents when they were building it, because of all the traffic it was going to create, but, you know, I think we've all been there, you don't see a heck of a lot of traffic coming down Fisher Street, it's not like it's a traffic jam at the lights, or anything like that. So, I think as far as two options, you know, as far as two places, I think the, you know, thing about being split between the school district is one that's a huge potential savings to the taxpayers, if we do go forward with something like this, because having neighborhood elementary schools, putting all the burden on one of those schools means, there's no way, and by the way, would be the IGO district, and there's no way they could handle, you know, all the increase, where the three schools would have an ability to handle it in a better way. I think putting it over the existing commercial only, not in the parking lot area, again, makes it less likely it's going to happen, not that it wouldn't happen, and it makes it probably less likely of size, so, you know, in deference to Burt's comments before about, you know, the state forcing us to do something, and everybody hates that, we all hate it, I voted against the original thing as well, but the reality is, the state's forcing us to do the, you know, accessory use, we don't have a say there, so you can say whatever you want, but the state does have certain leverage points that they can control, and they could go that same route with us, if they want. And they could go that same route with us if they wanted to, they could mandate a zoning change, which we'd have no call on. So I think creating a zone area that's not going to have major impacts on the community long-term likely, short-term probably not at all, that, you know, we meet the requirements, we've shown good faith in trying to get to a point, and we're not putting a huge burden on the town in that sense. Would I like to see zero?
Absolutely.
I think the town in general does, but every time we turn around and say we have no land to develop, a, a new site gets developed with 40 houses on it. So, I mean, those are likely to have much more kids than, you know, these apartment complexes which are very expensive to live in. If you look at the price tag on the Sylvan and the, if, if you don't have the affordability, even with the affordability, I'm sorry, the affordability doesn't really make up, it's affordable to Foxborough, it's not affordable on a state level. So I, I think, you know, as much as I appreciate the massive concern, and I didn't like the original plans where we did a, a 50-acre site that was nothing but raw land, that was, you know, whether, you know, done in the short-term or long-term, that just, you know, smacked of something that would happen at some point in time. So I'm not a proponent of, you know, option one, but I am a proponent of option two to meet the requirement, and quite honestly, I don't think the, you know, the hit to the town is going to be much.
Anybody else have?
Yeah, I, I agree with Bill, I like option two. But I also, also have to say, you know, you know, Bert came up, you know, was very passionate, you know, with what he had to say, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of us who know him respect him immensely. But we were voted in to do what's best for the town. And when you're hearing what the downside of, of losing so much potential grant money down the road, and then we hear that it could be federal money also, and we've got the Taylor School, which could be, you know, multimillion-dollar project, and losing that potential funding, you know, I feel a lot more comfortable with the two plans you brought forward versus the old one. And I also think, you know, the splitting of the school districts, I don't want to go hash it over, but, you know, option two for me seems like the best option, and I think it's important that, you know, we, we, we say what we want for our town instead of one more time having it mandated, this is where it's going to be.
I think your, I think your point's a hundred percent valid, because if it ever ended up that they came back and said you had to do it on the, within the Patriot property lines, then we know what's going to happen, and, and at that point, it's 1,100 potential units versus, you know, 130.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a huge.
At least we can discuss our own destiny at this point.
Right, I agree.
Nothing's changed for me, it was a no when I ran in May, and it's, it's still a no-no. I think it'll forever change the character of our community, and that's something that we can't get back, we can't go backwards. I, I don't have full faith in that if we zone it, they won't build it. I think that there will be ways around builders that will want to come in, the state will offer more incentives, as it continues to do now, to these potential builders to come in. They don't, they don't, they don't specify what grants we could lose, there's only vague references to the, the guidelines that we're supposed to be following for grant, the lack of grants. And I'm, I don't want to be held hostage by the state anymore, it's extortion, and I agree with Bert that this is the United States of America, and for the state to extort us on how we are going to build and live in our own community is, is a disgrace. And I said no when I ran, and I say no now, it's not for our town.
Dennis?
Well, I favor option two. The, the question I have is, out of these two options, what do you think the reaction is going to be at the town meeting to these two options?
I am new to Foxborough, so I have absolutely no idea. At the, I, I think it was the final community engagement session, an informal poll was taken where people were, you know, asked to raise their hands for which options were least objectionable. And somebody half-jokingly said, "Well, can we raise our hand if we don't like any of them?" And the first time around, I allowed that. I mean, it's not much help to me when I'm trying to narrow the focus, but the first time around, just, you know, just so that we could get a temperature, I'd say 80% of the hands went up for neither. However, people who usually attend community engagement sessions are people who have an incentive to do so, and usually it's a negative incentive, so I'm not 100% sure if they're going to be representative of people who come to town meeting, so I have no idea. Really, at the end of the day, I have absolutely no idea what's going to happen at town meeting.
Well, the, the other thing with option two is, it's, we, we get it in terms of the presentation and why it's a better option, but it is a little bit nuanced for the town meeting to absorb that and understand it in a way that they're going to be able to rally behind it and support it. So that would be, it just needs to be a lot of thought put into the presentation in terms of, do they get what you're saying? Because reading between the lines, you know, these options aren't going to produce anything.
Right.
You know, so they, they need to understand that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work on that.
And connect the dots to, connect the dots to.
Yeah, it's hard for me because.
This is the best way of complying without having a major impact.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, it's hard for me to, to, to break it down in, in really simple terms, just because number one, it's complex, but number two, at home, my husband's a planner, by education, he has a master's in planning even though he doesn't use it. At work, I'm surrounded by planners, so it is, I, I'm going to have to probably attack my mother-in-law and force her to, to listen to what I have to say, to try to get the message packaged in a way that, that, you know, an educated but non-planner person can, can understand. I agree, there's a lot of nuance. I also would agree that because this is by-right zoning, by-right zoning means by-right. So you always have to be very careful when you, you lay that out. And, you know, because of that reason, I would personally, if, if I were asked, what would you recommend based off of everything that you've heard, I would recommend the sub-district scenario for the people of Foxborough, just given what I've, I've heard from them. So, you know, I, I, I might say that at, at town meeting if it wouldn't be outside of my role, and I'm not 100% sure of that, so if, you can tell me if it is outside of my role. But I, I do believe that because of the nature of by-right zoning, it's probably for the best to, to go with the sub-district version because it is less developable at the end of the day.
Right. By the way, while we're on that point, I think absolutely you could say that.
Okay.
I don't know, I think that's kind of making a political call on something, so I think she can only present the options in, in general.
But she's presenting it as our town plan.
Yeah, she could give a professional opinion if, I mean.
And it's because, it's based off of what residents are telling me, it's not necessarily 100% what I would do, probably it would be just because I would like more control over what happens there, but that's because I'm a, for, for completely different reasons, I would probably still do the sub-district scenario, but because of what the, the residents were telling me was most important to them. Like that, this whole model was drawn after listening to residents through the, the course of those public meetings.
Which I think you did a very good job, and I, and I, and again, I think the point you made during the presentation, if during, if the area up near the stadium was to, that's outlined in two, was to be redeveloped, there isn't going to be a lot of families who want to live on top of the stadium. Maybe some wealthy individuals would like, you know, would like the apartments and stuff like that, but that's fine, that doesn't create a, a harm or conflict to the town, it doesn't create issues on the school, doesn't create public safety issues. I think both the lodge and Sylvan might be a little bit different for public safety if they were to be developed, but again, we're talking 130 units versus 1,100 units. That's a huge control difference that we would have, whereas if we just leave it open and do nothing, you know, in all deference to all the taxpayers in this town who think the state can't get away with doing stuff, I would have told you they would never have gotten away with the accessory use thing, and they just put it into law.
Just did it.
So it's done. So, you know, and I don't agree with that either, but now there's no choice to it, so.
We're hearing, I mean Catherine Goodness says, "We're hearing," again, it's, could be speculation, but you might have it more, I mean, we are hearing about, they're contemplating actually assigning, I don't know, masters or whatever to come in and actually designate a district in town. So it would be not the townspeople doing it, you've heard that too, right?
Right, yeah.
Who knows if it's true?
Court-appointed agent.
But they're saying, "Court-appointed, they'll come into a town and Milton will decide what the district is if the town won't do it."
If it's a state law, the state has more control than the town does, just like the federal.
They delegate land use to us, they could take it back.
None of us like it, I, I mean, I, I, I don't even think that this should be an option out there, but I tell you right now, for the town's sake, I would like to mitigate the option as much as I possibly could and, and move forward than not mitigate it and let them do something to us that could be 10 times worse. And again, looking at the sites, I, I, I just love the concept because I think it's so much harder to actually do what the state wants to do.
It's a 130-some-odd units.
We could build 130 units tomorrow, I mean, this town, we could, I don't care what anybody says, there's enough land still left there to do it, so.
Exactly. All right, so I agree 100% with Doc about Bert's comments. He sat at this table, he, he loves this town, I know he, he, you know, he's, his opinion is based on what he thinks is best. Where I differ with him is I think, Bill just said it, you know, the, the state can do what the state wants, wants to do, I, you know. And I did ask Catherine a couple of questions, I think at the second meeting I attended. First of all, I was the person who was, everybody was saying, "No, no, no," and I said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." I said, "Could, could we do it over again and just, can you, even if you, a town meeting you vote no, can you vote tonight on which one of these two you prefer?" So that Catherine has an idea what to, I said, "Something's coming forward." So just give her your opinion on, on the options, and then we did, and I believe number two did, there was one person that still voted for the original number one.
Yeah, there were two, actually.
Okay, and then most of the people, I think, went, went for this one.
Oh, definitely.
If they had to, if they were forced to vote on something. But, so, and, you know, some, some of the things that, you know, Bert said, you know, I'm hearing from other people, again, why are we voting this again? Why, we said no then. And I think the discussion that we did have was that we made sure we put it up in the spring, giving us the fall town meeting as another opportunity to comply before the end of the year. So, so that's why, you know, so many people I think that, that mitigated, is coming up again. All right. So a couple of things that I asked Catherine that I think matter is, you know, everyone keeps saying, "Let's wait till Milton." I believe you said that from what you were hearing, you know, that things weren't going well for their fight.
Well, not, not necessarily.
I'm paraphrasing, I don't want to.
Just that we won't know until after all this is done.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
And so, and I think the other question I had for her was, so if we, if then at some point after the first of the year, we find out that things don't go well for Milton, you know, can we just say, "Okay, we'll try again?" And your answer was, "If we're not in compliance by the 31st of December, we're not in compliance." And so there is no coming back, I mean, not that we couldn't vote on something.
There might be, but they could immediately yoink back to grants that we have outstanding.
Exactly.
We don't know what they'd do.
And pulling back grants that were already given, never mind just not giving them, that you, you said you really hadn't seen that before, that grants that were given.
Not since 2014.
Exactly, or coming back, okay. Couple other things, I asked, you know, I know this was in two phases, you told me that Milton was the only town not to comply in the first phase, so everybody else has complied, except one town. So that tells me the state note, that everybody, everybody else listened to, "Let's come up with a plan." And then I believe I asked in the second phase, at the time, I think you might have said that Foxborough was one of seven that had.
I think there's six or seven, and some of them have since come into compliance.
But how many, how many towns, was it 50-some-odd?
I don't remember how many were in the second tier, there are actually three. So there's another one that's due next year.
Okay, okay.
And that, those ones are, are the more, like, distant from, from transit, so those are probably going to be really, really messy, so they're, they're going to want to clean things up before it gets to that point. But I, I, yeah, I don't remember how many were in the second tier, but it, it's a good number, it's all the commuter rail communities. And then the adjacent, as I say, adjacent communities are the next round.
Yeah. And I guess the other thing I would say for people, you know, yeah, if no was, I, I'm sure we would all vote no, if that was, if that was an option, we would just vote no. Couple, a couple of things, I, you know, we, we look at what they've built in, in Mansfield, okay? Now, and I just happen to be, so I grew up in Stoughton, we always have the commuter rail there since I, since we lived there 55 years ago. So they're right in the center of town, there's a big apartment building going, like, right in the center of town. And the first thing I thought as I looked at it, I was like, "You know what? We're lucky that that's not what we have to do here, that, that the train, that, that, you know, is where it is, so because of, of it being half a mile, half a mile right, that we don't have to do that in the center of town." And so I was just kind of putting it into perspective of what we would have to do here to comply is not even close to what some towns are having to do to comply, that, that would really change the entire fabric of, of the town. You know, we all, you know, everyone talks about that up on Route One, okay, we know there's a football stadium up there, and, you know, that, you know, and there are people that live up near Route One, so my point isn't that it's not going to affect nobody, but it's not like it's right in the center of, you know, on the common. And so I think we have to somewhat, you know, take that, and, and I guess, you know, most of us feel like we just have to come up with something to try to comply, and then, and then go from there. So I guess that's, that's my opinion, I don't think that we're not going to be, I don't think we're going to get a slap on the hand if we don't comply, I think we're, I think they're going to make, you know, examples of towns who don't, so that other towns comply, so.
I think they very well could make an example of Milton, because Milton doesn't want any development, no matter what. So, I mean, that's really the way it is there.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not Foxborough, Milton is not Foxborough.
And, and again, I think, I think you'd listen to what they're saying, because I know a lot of the residents that were very concerned was because initially they were afraid it was going to be literally right on top of their neighborhoods. And again, I would have been very concerned, and there was no way I would vote for, for that as well. But this option two doesn't put it on top of any neighborhood, number one, and that would, would be very limited, I, I think, you know, if you have 50 units, there's nobody's even going to recognize what the traffic in 50 units is, especially where it's coming out onto Route One. And then the, you know, and the other two places already are, you know, communities. So it's, it's not like you, you have that kind of a, a major switch. So I think, I hope taxpayers look at this, and yes, we have to get over the fact, and I, and I don't even like having to say this, but you have to get over the fact that we just in general don't like it, okay, we all don't like it. That, that's, that's the guaranteed part of it. But we, as Doc said, we're here to represent the town and say, "How do we mitigate this to the fullest extent we possibly can and not get penalized down the road, and potentially not even have half of this being built that we're talking about here, which would be nothing then?" I mean, that won't have any impact on the town as far as the fabric of the town if, if 50 units were built. It just won't. So, you know, I think, you know, even 130 units isn't going to change the fabric, you know, a lot, and I, I think the way it's being designed isn't going to impact individual neighborhoods, which is the biggest part of that, as far as I'm concerned. So if it was going to impact individual neighborhoods, then we'd all have a, I think, a very serious concern that we couldn't support it at all.
The most, the most thing that scares me out of, not about the grants, is the Taylor School. I mean, we know that's, we know that's coming, whether it's next year, the year after, three years down the road, and, you know, what that would mean, it's, they, the state usually when they, when they give us the grant, it's roughly half?
Yeah, about 40% in, in the end.
But they might not.
Well, you know.
Well, they might, they might not.
Well, they, they, they've done it for the high school, they've done it for the middle school.
No, 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 I mean, holding back the grants.
Oh.
They may, they may not, that's.
But they already are holding back grants at Milton.
Even ones that weren't listed, that's the problem, we don't know what they're going to hold back.
So they keep changing the rules, so the, the more we stand in line with them, the more they change the rules, we, we'll never catch up.
Yeah, but you're standing in line with one community, not 170 communities.
But there's more than, there's about 31 communities that have not submitted an.
In our round, they're, they're fewer than that. In the next round.
I just looked it up, I think there's 130 this round.
And they're, are they total? That's a lot more than I thought they were.
And you said we're around seven, one of seven that haven't, and you have Milton from the first round, so that's eight communities who have said no.
Well, a lot of them have yet to go to town meeting.
Yes, okay.
You know, I, I worked with the state when I was at Cambridge, billion-dollar budget, 85% of our funding came from the state. And if you partner with the state, you get a lot of things from the state, it's not just grants, it's a relationship. So if you partner. partner, partner with them, you work with them, there are benefits beyond the grants. And there are opportunities that present that go, you know, beyond the grants. So if you're a partner, you know, there is a value to partnering with them, particularly at a time when they're looking for partners, that I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't understate, really, in terms of how to think about it.
They're not looking for partners, they're, they're railroading them in. Well. Yeah, but you know what, you know, and that's fine. I, I don't have a problem with your opinion at all. But the problem is, this is not a, just a Massachusetts problem. This is a nationwide problem. And other areas of the country, they're doing what they're doing. And, you know, like, like Bill or Doc said, who would have thought, you know, we voted on the accessory apartments and we said no. And the next thing you know, accessory, we don't have a choice. Now, now it's like, okay, now we're going to give you, and the one thing we had was we could, we could work on some of the particulars, right, dimensions and stuff, to comply. So, I mean, this isn't, this, we always, this problem would go away, but it's not going away. And if we don't come up with something, you know, to comply, I just feel like at some point, they might come by and say, "Guess what? Well, we're going to, you know, we're going to take this piece of land and, and have at it." And, you know, and, and also, the one thing I wondered, I think it's too late now anyhow, but if, if we had thrown affordability, you know, people like to hear that word, but if we had thrown affordability into some of these projects, would that have driven some of the people from developing? Because they, you know, they're not going to make as much money on having little, it's too late anyhow, right?
I mean, there's a, there's a trade-off, because if you require affordability, then you, you are saying, like, you know, people will locate there that ordinarily wouldn't. So, you know, parents with young children, if they, if they need an affordable unit, they might go there, right? But you're right, if you have the affordable units, that, that makes it a little bit more challenging to build. There are different standards that are a little bit more expensive. You do get some state money to offset it, but not necessarily, depending on the percentage.
If we were looking at the 1,100 to 1,200 units, that might have been something. But for 130 units, yeah, yeah, it's.
Yeah, I don't think that it would have changed reality. I mean, one way or the other, anything that's built here would be very, very expensive to do, and parking would be a serious consideration, particularly given the context. So I'm not, I'm not, I, like I said, I was very conservative in terms of what I thought could be built in these areas.
Yeah. Well, Catherine, thank you, because, you know, you did, you did a wonderful job. You know, it's, it's hard when you know, nobody in town wants this, right? So it's hard to, to come forward and, you know, but you did a great job with giving us some good options. So I guess, so are we gonna, we're going to vote on an option that, that, well, I, I think, I think if, out of all the options, everyone kind of sounded like, other than Deb doesn't like any of them, but that's okay. But, but we sound, so should, should we vote on each one? Should we say, okay?
I think you need to vote to recommend both of them, and then if it votes no, then so be it type of thing, right?
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Is that how it goes?
Or they could just choose whichever one. I mean, you don't have to, you can just choose whichever one you want.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I just thought for the motion sake that, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so do, we want you to read the.
Motion to recommend approval, special town meeting article number six, MBTA Communities Patriot Place version.
No.
No. No, option two.
No.
So it'll be Article 7 instead of Article 6.
I have that.
So you could just do motion to, do, read it and say.
Article 7, right here.
Article 7, sub-district model.
Oh yeah, I got that.
Right, so moved.
Motion.
So moved.
So moved.
There you go. No, say it, please.
Yeah.
Motion to recommend approval of special town meeting article number seven, MBTA Communities subdivision, sub-district version.
Second.
Any other discussion?
You did a great job.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And thanks again for the extra two weeks.
My pleasure. Okay, all those in favor? Two. All those opposed? Okay, great. And again, all those at home, before we start, Katie gets a bunch of emails, "This was just our recommendation for town meeting." So everybody doesn't think we, we voted on this right now. So, okay, awesome, alright. Alright, the magic of lights. Hello, Mazinos.
Hello. Thanks for having me. Jessie knows, excuse me, Gillette Stadium, Craftsports and Entertainment. I don't think we, this isn't a public hearing, so do you want me to just dive into the license application, or do we need to read anything in first?
No.
Well, I'll just set the stage. So we typically would deal with something like magic of lights as an action item, but during the agenda prep meeting, a couple of concerns were raised. And I spoke to Jess about it today. There was concerns about, originally, when we talked about magic of lights a couple of years ago, particularly when the parking lot was being expanded towards Norfolk and Walpole residents, there was a discussion that the planning board members remembered that the magic of lights would probably not happen, but if it did, it wouldn't be any closer than it had already been done. So we wanted, the map wasn't clear, it looked like it was going right up against the property line, so we wanted to talk about that. Also, there was a question about the fee. And then we were just talking about notification protocols moving forward. So those were the three items that were, should be discussed.
Okay. So you've had a chance to talk to, was Kevin Weinfeld was going to reach out from planning about the, about the, yeah, the location?
Yep.
If it would be back by the houses in Walpole.
I did connect with Kevin, and the, it's actually, it was a miscommunication on our part, because the map that we submitted used an outdated aerial. So if you look at the map in the original application, it does show the accurate route, but it doesn't reflect the accurate site. We did submit an additional one, but yesterday, so I'm not sure if it's made it into your board docs or not. But what you'll see is that the, the route has remained the same. It does not actually border the perimeter of our, our property. It stays, it completely avoids any of the newly or newer cleared spaces that you would see, that we cleared back in 2022. Those spaces were also, that property was cleared for the 2022 run of magic of lights as well. And we didn't have any issues, but it is still, this year's route map steers clear of all of that newly cleared area.
So is the map we have, the newer one?
Yes.
So it's the red squares or rectangles in the back? Is that what we're referring to? I can't tell because there's so many different colors here. Or is, is the route goes literally through the entire property all the way around?
It goes all the way around, correct.
Okay.
So do they start in the green? Can you just walk, do you have the map in front of you?
I do, yeah.
Can you walk us through it? Because we are all looking at it, right? I mean, we don't have it on the screen, but do you have it, does everybody have their thing open?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can see all of those green lines, those are the staging lines, so that we can pull vehicles off of Route 1 and avoid any traffic backup. So we essentially create a giant Disney-esque queue of vehicles. And then it goes right from green to red. You know, it's currently, what says Fairy Tales, which is, you know, the, the theme of that specific area, then to the patriotic flags. And you can just follow sort of the color-coded lines all throughout the property. The area in question is, when you look at, when you move all the way sort of to your left, you can see the enchanted tunnel around the world in Nativity. Those, around that lot, is now some of the area that has been cleared out and paved. That, and though the route itself doesn't go into any of the newly cleared areas.
So this aerial is still the old aerial that we're looking at, or no? Because it looks like it's going right up to the property, well practically, right?
I'm not sure which one. So we submitted a new one yesterday, or the day before?
That is the new one that's in community, or formerly board docs. And the one that was submitted a couple of weeks ago has been deleted, just so there was no.
Yeah, so this, this puts you right against the property line.
Can you pull it up?
Lindsay, do you want to look at mine to make sure we're just looking at the right one?
Well, you know what? It probably looks, there is, there is, I don't know, I don't know what was cleared. Do you see how there is?
It's because the, it's the lot, the access through P10, so when you look at prehistoric, right, and you're looking at the document to the left, the red line that goes, that is the prehistoric and then snowflakes exhibits, you can see the, the areas right of the half of that back of the lot to the left, and then the completely separate lot all the way to, it's not even entirely in this, in this map.
Oh, I was looking at the wrong place. Were you, this is.
Yeah, but the other side, if you look at where, when you're coming out, I can't really read this because it's so small, but, and I'm blind, where it says around the world, that's right against the property, which is probably the closest to that neighborhood.
The neighborhood in question that had the concerns back in 2022 is the one that's Concord Drive. So it's the one that's all the way in the upper left-hand corner.
Look how, look how close that one is.
I get that one. So there was no concerns with the corner that's going back where around the world and 500 feet is to the property of the people there?
Nope. No, we didn't have any issues or complaints. The concern was all, and the planning board conversation was all surrounding that parking lot expansion, all the way to the upper left of the map.
Okay. Right, thank you.
I got my magnifying glass.
I've got to get some.
It's kind of small.
And then also, at the time, I, I know that especially, it was more of a planning board discussion than, even than a license discussion, but at the time, there was no plan for magic of lights to return to Gillette Stadium. They had an existing contract with another venue, and they were to move a multi-year contract, and their plan was for them to be operating there. And then that fell through. So there was no magic of lights in the market last year. And then they approached us this summer and asked if there was any appetite to host the event again. And before we entered any conversation with the producer, we checked in with both chiefs to make sure that there weren't any existing public safety concerns or anything that had happened, that they would give them pause and got the green light from them, and then move forward with the conversation with the event producers.
Jess, can I, can I say one thing about that, though? The chiefs don't control or represent the town, the board does. So if you're going to have a conversation, fine to have it with them, just to make sure there's no issues. But really, if you knew back in July you were going to do something like that, it should have been brought forward to the board to make sure there was no concerns. I guess the thing that's concerning me is that there's been a couple of things now with events where you've already advertised and gone through the whole thing, and then we're getting the courtesy of what's, what's going to happen. And that's really not the way it should work. You know, I think just as open communication between us, you know, we should be part of that conversation. Not that we're going to say no to anything or go through the process, but it's not like we should, after the tickets are sold, by the way, we're having an event, you know, do you have any issues? So.
I think, I think this came up last year or the year before. I think, like, a concert, you know, all of a sudden, you know, it's on social media that a concert is coming and the town hasn't even, you know, given approval yet, or even, I don't even think I feel like we have to give the approval before you start, but at least know that it's happening. And then we can, you know, because then it's like afterwards, it's, you know, I think it was, was that last year, two years ago? I think Doc or Dennis. Dennis, do you remember that? I'm trying to think if that was before you were on the board.
No, it was, it was, it was two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah, I forgot. It was a country star that we found out that.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I think, I think we just want to make sure, like I said, I mean, has, the town, I don't think the towns ever said no about a, to a concert or anything, but just to find out that the tickets are already on sale, and then that's how we're finding out. And to Bill's point, the same thing, I think, you know, Paige told us that one of the chiefs had said, "Oh yeah, you know, they, they told me about, about the magic of lights." But, you know, at the end of the day, the license is going to come from this board. So just, just that we know, that's all.
Sure.
You know.
I think there's also a lot of nuance to the conversation, especially when it comes to, you know, an event like magic of lights versus a concert, right? Like, there's very different confidentiality and concerns surrounding those conversations. And so, you know, we, we can't come before this board, six months before a concert announcement. Most of the time, we don't know, to be honest. And even once we do, we can't have those conversations publicly. I mean, we're, we're tied to certain levels of confidentiality, and every act is different and requires different levels of NDA's. So I hear your concern, and certainly understand that the Board of Selectmen is the, is the licensing board and issuing the licenses that allow these events to take place. And we can work on more of a, more of a heads up, but there's, there's never going to be a world in which we can come and present to you before a concert is announced. Not in a public setting. I don't know if there's a appetite to explore an executive session concept or something along those lines, but that, we won't ever be able to have those conversations months in advance.
Well, so, so well, that's good for you to explain that to us, you know, and then maybe we could work on, you know. So basically what you're saying is, an act may say, you, you know, you can't publicly announce yet, and.
A lot of the time, depending on who, who it is and what the, who the promoter is, whether we're the promoter, whether it's like a Live Nation or an AEG show, which are the two biggest promoters in the, in the country, we won't know until a couple of weeks in advance. Like, it moves incredibly quickly. The tour routing will be a discussion that's had, you know, months, sometimes even a year or so in advance, where they're saying, we're looking for these dates, would potentially, we've got an artist we're representing, and this is a timeline that they might be in your market. But oftentimes, the vast majority of the time, it's held just underneath the Live Nation or the AEG umbrella. Sometimes we're given a genre, but it's not, it usually doesn't, it, it, there's not that level of, of advanced notice. So I don't know, you know, again, I'm, I'm not saying that there's nothing, that we can't improve our communication and that we can't be better. And it's kind of, this is kind of a tricky conversation to have in the context of magic of lights, because to be completely honest, we don't have those confidentiality concerns with magic of lights. You know, we could have had this conversation in August. But as it pertains to Coldplay, which is a, you know, two concert events that have, have gone on sale and technically fall underneath the event license, that will be before you in, you know, March or April 4. That's a kind of a completely separate set of circumstances, and it's just a different level of concerns from our perspective.
But I think, Jess, with all due respect, and I know, Doc, we had this conversation, we're not asking you to come to a public meeting. We're asking you to text the chair or text me and just give us a heads up. And so, that's all. It's just a mere courtesy so that, you know, the, one of us at least isn't like hearing about Coldplay or whatever, you know. And even if you didn't tell us who the act was, just, "Hey, heads up, we're looking at a big show on August 30th." Okay, great. So I think it's just a matter of just feeling that we're sort of part of the process before it's all said and done. And it's just a courtesy, really, to the board, so that they're not hearing about it on TV, or, I mean, on the radio or at the deli. So it's something more of that.
We can certainly, I mean, if it's, if we can give, just, we can communicate like a general hold calendar. I mean, that's something too, that is already communicated with public safety, just for scheduling purposes too. So like, we can, that's something that we can definitely talk to much more freely. And without having to tie in a name, again, half the time that we don't know, we can certainly give this board like a more comprehensive view of what, like, the upcoming summer is going to look like. Yeah, that's easy enough.
And, you know, I'm just speaking for myself. I, I didn't even think about any, anything like that, because, so I, I think we could definitely work on a way for us to, to know. And now this board would know too, whether it was told to us in an executive session, we would know that that has to stay there, so that, and we, so I get that part of it. I never even, wasn't even a thought in my, my head of, you know, I just thought, you know, at some point you guys decide the concert, a concert's going to happen, and then it, then it happens, but, you know, so. Anybody else have something they want to, they want to add? I mean, we could definitely, are you happy with that, Paige?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Just getting, and then we could, you know, we know, then we would know that whatever is told to us just has to stay with us.
Well, I don't think we're going to go into executive session. That's not really a use of executive. I think it's really a matter of, you know, maybe Jess will call you, or Jess will call me, and just, "Hey, heads up, something's brewing. We've already talked to public safety," because, you know, that's part of the routine already, and we appreciate that. But just, just want you in the loop. We've got something big brewing, not even sure it's going to happen, but didn't want you to be the last to know.
Yep.
I think that's simply it. And probably you wouldn't even probably call everybody, but at least Bill would say, "Did you know?" And you go, "Yeah, I'm all set."
Yeah.
And Bill would be like, "Good."
Sure.
Yeah, because it is hard for us to hear it elsewhere.
Yeah, because it is hard for us to hear it elsewhere, Jess, and have no idea. I mean, the first time I heard about the lights was when tickets went on sale for Foxborough residents. He got the email.
Resident Rewards program.
Huh?
And the Resident Rewards program.
Right, which was great, but that's the first time I heard about it.
I completely understand.
Okay.
And then the last thing was the fee. I didn't know if you guys wanted to address. So my understanding, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, the fee that was submitted was $250 and that was a fee that they had paid in the past for Magic of Lights during COVID. But then the question was raised during the agenda prep meeting as to whether there should be a, right now, when there's a football game, you pay what, 200 per event or something? Like for an event?
For a concert or a sporting event, it's $200 per day.
Okay. Is there any sort of, is there an event fee in town in general? Like if, so, because I guess the question is, is it a, is the event a one-day event where you pay $200 for one day or is an event occur every day that the event is occurring? So I guess that's the board's conversation to have.
Well, if I can interject, the application pretty clearly states at the, the very top, it's a, it's a temporary outdoor entertainment license application for a series of three or more outdoor entertainment events. So that suggests that it is for a serialized event. At 200, and then it says $250 fee payable to the town of Foxborough. So we've hosted Magic of Lights for, in 2020, 2021 and '22. In '21 and '20, in '20 and '21, we also hosted Jurassic Quest, which was like a similar concept, similar footprint, drive-through style event. And then we also hosted a, another drive-through event that was Hot Wheels, all of which this was the town issued license application that we used and paid that $250 fee each time for the duration of the run.
How long is this running for?
It opens on November 22nd and it runs through Christmas Day, December 25th, and then with two off nights. So it's, it has to be down for the Patriots game on December 1st and then it needs a full day to reconstruct on December 2nd. So it's a total of 32 days.
You have to totally take it down?
No, it, it just gets condensed because the way the track runs, it needs to be, like certain breaks need to take place.
For the pocket.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, just to discuss that, I think it's something we should discuss as a policy issue certainly down the road, but I don't think we could, I think Jess was right. I think the way the application stands now.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at it. Apparently that was developed during COVID and we just had, no one's looked at it since. So we'll have to take a look at it. Because it, I mean, it does seem $250 fee for a month is.
Well, it could have been six months, it could have been a year based on.
Yeah, so it's kind of rough.
So, you know, I'm not going to lose it over this one, but I think we just immediately change it.
We have to look at it.
Absolutely. Put it on the next agenda.
Do, yeah, and is there, because we don't have anything else that's like this.
No, but just.
Like at any time, like when we opened to the Bear Guy, they paid $50 a day to, to have the license. But I don't know, that, that's different because they were serving alcohol, you know.
I think in practice, when you look at the fact that the, the concerts and everything else are done that way, I think this is just, maybe it was quickly put together and, and wasn't really well thought out. So again, it is what it is this time. It's not, we're not going to lose a fortune. I mean, I think the total max would be, would be nine.
$6,000, yeah, it was like, it's not, this is not about money.
We'll just fix it going forward, so.
Okay. So what this says, just so, so when we bring it up, so this is a series of three or more outdoor entertainment events, but this license is just, is just for this year?
Yeah, we'll just.
This isn't for three years, or is it?
No, it's just for this.
It's a change.
Okay, perfect.
That's fine.
Also, just for reference, we, for our Patriots and our Revolution season licenses, which understanding are, you know, completely separate animal, but just fall with, underneath the craft sports entertainment umbrella, those are one-time fees for the entire season. We don't pay on a per game basis. So the concerts are different and those are an individual fee per, per show, but for season-long events, it is a one-time fee. I think it's $500 for the entire Patriot season, $500 for the entire Rev.
There's a pilot in place that covers additional costs, but there's nothing in place for something like this.
Right.
Jess, did you sign a three-year contract for this one?
No, this is just a one-year one. Like I said, they had, it, we're not the ideal site for them and I think that they'll continue to try to find other sites. I, I learned my lesson last time though, so I'm not going to say it won't be before you again with this idea, with this concept, but they, this is just a single-year contract. It also timed out perfectly with the Patriot schedule and only having one game in which, you know, with our bye week and our, just our road schedule, it really aligned very conveniently. So, yeah.
Because obviously this is a holiday event. The, the other thing should have dinosaurs, the car, the cars are, you could have that anytime you wanted to have that.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. All set? Yeah, all set. Motion to approve the NPS LLC Temporary Outdoor Entertainment License Application for Magic of Lights to run November 22nd, 2024 through December 25th, 2024.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good luck. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, town manager's update.
Yes, I'll try to be quick. Yesterday, we held a warrant review meeting. So if anybody's curious about the articles for the upcoming town meeting, that should be running on, on demand and replaying on YouTube, not YouTube, Foxborough Cable, or you can look on Foxborough Cable's YouTube. As I've been reminding, special town meeting is November 18th at 7:00 PM. Prior to that, though, we have the Veterans Day Ceremony and that's on November 11th at 11:00 AM and all are welcome. It's at the high school. The financial summit, I'm going to constantly remind about that, November 26th at 5:30. That's something great for residents to pay attention to if you want to understand sort of where your tax dollars go and, and sort of the whole financial process. It's a great place to start by watching the financial summit. Light Up Town is November 30th. And then last night was Augusta's Pizza and they're in the skating rink. There's actually a restaurant in there now, so folks are encouraged to go try out their pizza. And I suppose, I hear they have incredible chicken bites, world famous chicken bites. So we all, we need to try those. That was during a Foxborough Common Business Collaborative Meeting last night. We also, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but Maura Buckley put out our first newsletter. So be sure to check that out if you haven't seen that. It's, we're going to be doing that monthly. She's already on us for the next article. So we hope for it to be a good source of information and just one more point of contact with the residents. And we today learned that there will be, the first Veterans banner will be raised tomorrow at 10, around 10:00 AM over by the Senior Center. So if anybody, we're not, they're not saying who it's going to be and they're not taking requests because it could take forever to get through 28 of those, but the first one will be going up just, we're all meeting just before 10:00 AM at the Senior Center tomorrow for the, the raising of the first banner. We have some open seats and two in particular, Norfolk County Advisory Board and then also the GATRA, which is the Greater Ataburo Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board. So those are two seats, but in the newsletter, check it out, it's on the front page of the website, there are other boards and committee openings. So we'd love to get some more members. If folks want to submit, go to the website and there's an application form. We do have a ribbon cutting on November 7th, that's what, Thursday? And that's from 2:00 to 4:00 at Convergent Technologies, so that we've been invited to that. And then we did have a very successful meeting with the Mass Gaming Commission and the Mass Cultural Council. They came out on, a week ago, Monday. We had a great turnout. I think it was about 50 people. Deb was able to attend. Thanks for coming, Deb. And we had three out of four of the Mass Gaming Commissioners and Senator Feeney was there. And so it was a really great, we had Deb there and then we had members of the EDC and the FCBC. So it was a good event and we got to highlight Foxborough and they were very pleased and I think they really got what we're doing. It was really an effort to show how state funding can help small towns and help small businesses. So I think it was very successful in that manner. Current open positions, we have a great job over at the Council on Aging and Human Services. There's a department administrator position open, so those you don't see often, but it's a great job. We have three jobs in DPW, equipment mechanic, laborer, driver, and the water technician. We have begun negotiations and the budget process is kicking off within the month. So we'll be working fast and furiously on the budget with the goal of, with Marie being, expecting, she's been working so hard to get us in good shape before she goes on maternity leave. So that's why we're working very fast in advance to take advantage of Marie. But she's also setting Brandon up, so he'll be ready to step in when she's taking some time off. Got some construction updates from Chris Gallagher. So there's some big news. The Walnut Street 140 project is going to impact the 95 South Off Ramp. So stay tuned, they're going to be shut down in detours, tend to be scheduled for Monday, November 12th at 8:00 AM and it would go all the way through November 21st. So it's just the southbound one. Please check the website. It's only one ramp, it's not all of them, but check the, we'll have more information on the website. We're waiting for the final sign-off on Mass DOT, but there will be a, a ramp closure coming up.
For that whole period, not so.
That whole period.
Not during the day or something, okay.
Yeah, so we'll have that, Maura will be advertising that heavily once it's finalized, but we wanted to give everybody a heads up that is coming. Yeah. Sidewalk construction, so we have Coacid Street from Ledger Road to Chestnut Street and it's now substantially complete. There's some punch lost items that the DPW is going to address, but the sidewalk is now available for use. The mechanic street from the rail crossing to Chestnut Street is done. Market Street from Granite Street to South Street, complete. Coacid Street from Adams Street to Pratt Street, complete. And South Street from Paula Lane to Fairway Lane is scheduled for 2025, 2025, and that'll depend on weather. So, so we have made some, some progress on sidewalks, which I know everybody will be thrilled about. The Centennial Street Water Main Replacement, they're installing a new six-inch water main to replace the existing asbestos cement line from Market Street to the Housing Authority property. Now, that's about 140 feet that's already gone in and they're anticipating it being completed by the end of November. So you'll see trucks over there. The South Street Raw Water Main, PJ Hayes is working nights on 495 to install the pipe inside the South Street Bridge and work schedules are approved from Mass DOT. Let's see, yeah, I already mentioned the I-95, the DPW garage expansion, so excavation of the foundation for the new structure has begun with pouring of concrete as early as next week. So we're starting to see it. We drove by there, it looks cleared and disturbed, but now we're going to start seeing concrete. And then 76 Main Street, asbestos abatement is complete and the sewer and elevator design are in progress and painting and flooring has been chosen. So we're getting there. And as you know, we got a donation for a new kitchen. So I was able to go over there and see, I didn't realize how big the kitchen was once you took out the counter that bisected it. So we're going to have, thanks to Evy Mom, we're going to have a 50 Styles diner paid for by Evy Mom. So it's going to be a great, great asset to that building. And that's all I have.
Okay, let's see. All right, I'm going to go a little bit backwards. I'm going to do old business first. Halloween Parade was fabulous. Deb and I went together.
It was fun.
And, yeah, it's, that's just always a great, great event and well organized and the, you know, the public safety got the street closed down so the kids could cross right there by CVS. It was, it was, it was like a well-oiled machine. It was really nice. Deb and I, we had, what did we have? We had seven and eight-year-olds and over 10.
Yeah.
Is that what it was? And, oh no, four and five-year-olds and over 10. So it was in the hunt for, for costumes and the kids, kids just had a great time and there was, they got some nice surprises up on the common and a good time was had by everybody. And a new business, I just thought it was funny to follow up, you know, Bert kind of stole the thunder a little bit. I didn't want to follow up with the Halloween Parade after talking about Mike, Mark Sullivan. You know, he, he sat on this board for two-plus terms. I think he, he came in with a year or something. You know, a, a good community person, a good caring of Foxborough person, and it was sad to hear of his passing. You know, I, I had heard that he was sick quite some time ago and then I thought, yeah, I think he was doing well. What I had heard was that it, you know, the cancer, he had come out of remission and I don't think he told people for a while. I was actually shocked here that he passed because I had, I had heard he was doing well at some point. So to his wife, Mary Ann, his children, our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you for sharing him with the community. Much, much appreciated. So anybody else have anything for, for business?
No.
So we'll go to our action items. Motion to accept the donation from Evy S. Mom to the New Community Center Cafe in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those, oh, other than, thank you, Evy.
Wow.
Exactly.
Only half of it.
Just give him more.
Yeah, it is quite the donation and you know what? It doesn't matter how much money you have, it still takes a special person to want to share that money with your, something that's good for your community. So thank you, Evy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to accept the donation from the Dudley family to the Veterans Services being a project in the amount of $130.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to appoint Chrissy Sigrist to the Council of Aging and Human Services Advisory Board for a term to end May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint William Milhome to the Historical Commission for a term to end May 31st, 2027.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to approve select board meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It was just funny because Deb yawned as she was saying.
Just tried to smack out a little bit.
Good night, everybody. Thanks for tuning in.
Bye, thank you.